Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Planning Board meeting of March 7, 2023 to order at 7:05. This will include a public hearing for the articles to be presented at town meeting. If we would all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you very much. Yeah, computer chair. All right. Our first order of business is Article X1. "Amend Carver zoning bylaw, Section 3580, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations." To see if the town will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaw, Section 3580, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, to reflect the work of the Solar Battery Storage Moratorium Committee as shown in an eight-page document titled "Changes to 3580 Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Installations Proposed by the Solar Battery Storage Moratorium Committee on File with the Town Clerk or Take Any Action Relative There Too." All right. This is a public hearing. If anybody has any questions, concerns, please feel free to raise your hand. We generally are very accepting, and this is, of course, a public hearing, so it's your time for your voice to be heard.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please. Yes, please. So this evening, we have Mr. Bruce Mackey, chairman of the Solar Battery Large-Scale Solar Battery Storage Moratorium Committee, who's going to give us a little introduction to the proposed changes and will help answer any questions we have tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mackey.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think I'm going to go through a lot of changes right now, but I think just for the record, I'll just kind of go through what the committee was about and the members it had. We had nine members on the moratorium committee. We got two select board members, two vice board members, which is the chair and vice chair here tonight. We had a CBA member. We had an IDA member. We've got two cranberry growers on the committee, and we had one past member of the planning board, which was myself. And just to go through, we had, we went through several months of meetings, and our first meeting was with K.P. Law, and the reason we started out with that was we wanted, needed an explanation of where we could go with these bylaws, what the Attorney General would allow and wouldn't allow. So Rick Corbo gave us, spoke about that and told us, you know, what we could do, kind of had a narrow alley to go through because the Attorney General just doesn't want the solar battery storage severely restricted. So we went and we read that speech by K.P. Law. Another meeting, we had Eversource Electric, and we spoke to several people from Eversource, and that was a really good meeting because it was a specially informative meeting for the planning board, and they gave us a list of people that we could work with. Eversource Electric told us about what they were looking for or what they do with their connections into solar projects. So that was an interesting meeting. We also had Steve Ward, who was a member of the committee. Steve was president, is president of the K.P. Cranberry Growers Association, and he spoke about how solar affects the cranberry growers, and if it was a good thing or a bad thing, and how the cranberry growers utilize solar on their properties. We also had another meeting with the solar company that does business in Carver, and we spoke to their engineers and developers, and they told us what they were looking for and how did they determine places in Carver where to do solar projects. A solar project can't be done everywhere, and so they have certain areas that they choose and has to be according to the power lines or according to where the distribution of electric is from. So we spoke with them for a meeting. We also had a meeting with a concerned group of citizens from Carver, and we spent a number of meetings with them, and they talked to us about their concerns with solar, and they talked to us about their concerns with battery storage. So we discussed that at one meeting. We also, at the very beginning, came up with a list of concerns by committee members, and through each meeting, we kind of chipped away at the list, and hopefully we got everybody's concerns addressed. We kind of held that for last so that we could hear the speakers' words and maybe answer some of those questions. Last of all, we did hear from Gary Flaherty, which is a conservation agent, and Rod Palmer, which is now our building inspector, and they spoke to us, we asked them questions about solar projects or battery storage projects that they had been involved with. So all these meetings came down to, so we made some revisions to the solar bylaw, and so the net prom and the planning board tonight, we did all of those, and we also came up with a battery storage bylaw that a lot of people wanted. So I think all in all, the committee's job was very successful. I think everybody was in agreement with all these changes, so, you know, I was very happy. But I think we had a quick number of members of the board from areas of town, and so I think it was good, and I recommend all these changes that we made and recommend the battery storage bylaw. And with that, I'll let, give this back to Mr. Shay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mackey. Did we have some updated definitions in regards to these?
In fact, I have some slides.
Thank you. Yeah.
All right. So first off, thank you to the police department for giving us their fabulous space and this great screen. We get three screens so people can see things, except for you guys. But if you're an elected official, have an eye in the back of your head, probably it's not a bad thing to evolve to one of these days, but we haven't happened yet. So I'm going to do my best to work off of the website and see how this works for the folks who are at home who want to follow along. So on our website, we posted all the articles and some of the information we have here. So from the public hearing notice is the information about X1. So in, all the notices on the website have a hyperlink in, so as Chairman Shay read. This zoning is shown in an eight-page document entitled "Changes to 3580 Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Installations Proposed by the Solar Battery Storage Moratorium Committee" is a hyperlink, so if you click on that, it actually takes you to the bylaw itself. So folks at home can navigate computers and find these things. These are also on file at the town clerk's office. They're also copied from the planning office as well. So what are those things that we looked at changing in the bylaw? So as we've already talked, and I've said in most of all the meetings, we met with the town council first because the Commonwealth has got their thumb on the scale regarding solar. They've deemed it as a critical public policy issue, so comparable to some other critical issues like 40B. They sort of lean on you a little bit, and solar is not 40B, but they have, through recent court cases, sort of narrowed the lane that folks have to deal with. So that information I have talked about is the fact that, you know, we have a very narrow lane to deal with. So under the solar amendments to the solar bylaw, one of the first things we plugged in were some provisions of the Massachusetts DOE/DP Clean Energy Guidelines for solar. That document is also on our website, and within it, it has a number of different things that we talk about citing issues for solar. Let me see if that looks better. So amongst those things that they've talked about in the guidelines is that, you know, ground-mounted solar PV arrays tend to appear made up of silicon solar cells. They're a thin layer of protective glass, and they're added to this substrate. There are panels. In fact, it says the vast majority of panels in our current use are made of silicon, but certain types of solar cells may include cadmium telluride, copper indium, and I said I was going to practice these words before, but I didn't, copper indium disenolate, and goinium arsenate. Most common types of solar panels are made of tempered glass, which is quite strong. They pass hail tests, and this is all from their guide. They pass hail tests and are regularly installed in arctic conditions. All solar panel materials including the chemicals noted above are contained in a solid matrix that's insoluble and non-volatile in ambient conditions. Basically, nothing's going to happen to it in regular conditions. Therefore, releases into the ground from leaching from the air from violation, violation, violation of this chemical, basically releasing chemicals into the ground are unlikely because of how these things are constructed. They go on to point out that particle emissions could occur if the materials were ground into a fine dust, but there's not really a realistic scenario for something like that. And because PV materials are enclosed, they don't mix with water or vaporize into the air, and there's little of any risk of chemical releases to the environment during normal use. They go on to say that only an unlikely event of a sufficiently hot fire is there a slight chance of chemicals being released. This is unlikely because most residential fires aren't hot enough to melt PV components, photovoltaic components. There may be rare instances where solar panels might get subject to a higher temperature where silicon and other chemicals might compromise the solar panels, but likely bind to glass. So what kind of temperatures are we talking about? The researchers have concluded that those temperatures that we see, you need about a high melting point of about 1,000 degrees Celsius, that's not Fahrenheit, but Celsius, and a typical roof fire in a house is 800 to 900 degrees Celsius, and that is with the house burning underneath of it. So the temperature you have to get to to start to melt a panel would be unusual fine in the field. So can chemicals that are contained in solar panels threaten drinking water? Mass DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, has determined that the installation of solar panels can be compatible with operations and protections for public water supplies, and that includes installations of solar arrays within the Zone 1, which is a 400-foot protective radius around a public groundwater well. Will flooding occur where trees have been removed? Installing solar arrays on undeveloped land can preserve the permeable nature of the land surface provided to protect, project, oops, excuse me. I'm going to stop pushing that button. Will flooding occur? Essentially, trees are there, trees absorb water. When you put solar panels out, you're not covering the area with panels, but you are increasing the amount of infiltration. So when water hits those solar panels, it goes into the ground, it goes into the ground quicker than it normally would, and that's why stormwater calculations are very important prior to stormwater installations, and something the board looks at in part site plan review and special permit review. Glare, we did have a provision in the bylaw for glare, that solar PV modules shall be positioned in a way that minimizes glare to the greatest practical extent on residential public waves at any time during the day. DOE/AR's guidelines say that you can do pre-construction modeling, and we've added that to our bylaw, that can ensure that placement of solar panels prevents glare. They go on to say solar panels are designed to absorb solar energy and convert it into electricity. Most are designed with anti-reflective glass that captures and retains much of the solar spectrum as possible. Solar module glass has less reflectivity than water window glass. In fact, an analysis of a proposed 25-degree fixed tilt plate located outside of Vegas showed that the potential for hazardous glare from the flat plate glass PV systems is similar to that of smooth water, and not expected to be a hazard to air navigation. In fact, throughout the world, there are solar sites located near solar fields, and no documented instances where solar panels interfered with building flights. So some additional materials we added to the, to our solar bylaw, landscaping plans, diagrams of sightlines, construction of stormwater management and erosion controls, as well as a posted installation and stormwater management plan, and prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant will provide the building commissioner and the special rebranding authority with safety data sheets with all the components interim and external for products for the construction of the solar energy facility. Setbacks, we talked quite a bit about setbacks and tweaked some of those. So presently, the front and side rear setbacks were solar 50 feet where the property is in commercial zone and the butters are commercial zone. In residential agricultural districts, which is about 80% of Carver, there's a 200-foot setback on all the lot lines that abut residential agricultural districts. One of the things that we talked about quite a bit was the provision of director butters having an option to reduce those setbacks. So in this revised language, direct butters have the option of reducing the setbacks to a minimum of 50 feet along their common border with the RE district by providing a signed affidavit that basically waives the standard setbacks and screening requirements. Setbacks would be reduced to 12.5 feet, that was in the bylaw before, where in a joint application by the owners and common owners of abutting property. Other setbacks added to the bylaw include at least 150 feet from abutting water, properties, wells, and septic systems. The required setbacks for smart and dual-use arrays was increased. The planning board previously could give a setback of 25 feet. We have increased that to 50 feet when they abut a residential agricultural district. Land clearing, we made some provisions for chase for land clearing, including the addition of a pre-construction conference, and we changed some of the amount of area that could be disturbed. So we added that no more than 30% of the forested land, up to five acres per lot, could be deforested for anyone. All those initials stand for large-scale ground-mounted solar. So I won't say it again and again, I will be here all night if I say every time the initials come up. We also added some measure for mitigation of loss, loss of forest habitat, which we proposed. They have to bring a plan that shows the mitigation measures, which include wildflower meadow habitat, pollinator species within and immediately around the large-scale ground mounted, and a successional forest habitat in surrounding areas managed to prevent shading until the installation is decommissioned and the site is restored to forest. One of the things that I struck with early on was Mass Autobahn puts out a report every year or so called "Losing Ground," and it talks about the amount of forested land that's lost in Massachusetts. Every day, 13 acres of forested land is lost in Massachusetts, a quarter of that for solar. I thought that was a very telling strategy, and one that in all the bylaws I've looked at and written at tried to minimize that amount of clearing. So in this case, the town, through the conversations with the folks who are the cranberry growers and the other folks, we settled on that five acres as the minimum, as the maximum area to be disturbed, and if it's disturbed, it has to have some mitigation. No clearing or site work can happen prior to a pre-construction conference held with the contractor, town staff, including the building commissioner, the conservation agent, and the town planner. Pre-construction hearings or pre-construction conferences are something we do pretty regularly with subdivisions where we meet with staff, with the contractors, everybody who's got a hand in this to make sure they understand what the conditions are, walk the site and make sure there are any questions before they get started. Because I know I have rented a chainsaw before, and in God-fearing name of the chainsaw, you start looking at, oh, is there something else? Is there something else we can cut while I got this thing cranking? So we want to make sure that we're not taking out things that shouldn't be taken out in the interim. Control of vegetation, this is language that was changed basically to comply with what the actual facts on the ground are, is use of chemicals, herbicides or pesticides are limited by those provided to the Department of Agriculture and Pesticide Bureau. Additional requirements, and one of the conversations we had, as Bruce Mackey talked about with the solar companies, with Eversource, is that Eversource says, if you want the lands underground, we'll put them underground. If you want them above ground, we'll put them above ground. So in our case, we said, well, the preference has always been for underground, so they have to be underground unless there's something verified by our town's consulting engineer that says you can't install them underground after they're above ground. We also put in a provision about repair and replacement of non-functioning panels as well. Ownership changes. So if the ownership changes for a crown mounted solar, the property owner changes, the special rebranding, in fact, provided that the owner, the new owner or operator, assumes in writing all the obligations of special permit and site plan approval and decommissioning plan. The owner-operator will notify the building commissioner if such change in ownership within 14 days of that change, and the new owner或operator has to provide that notification and meet with the permitting authorities that originally received the permit. So if the folks who've got solar arrays A, B, C have to get a permit from the planning board, have to get a permit from the conservation commission, the owners are going to have to go meet with those boards, introduce themselves, and make sure they fully understand the obligations that they apply to. And regarding stabilization and revegetation, necessary, once again, the introduction of pollinator species in cranberry plants, especially for dubious installations. We're very fortunate, the University of Massachusetts at Dartmouth has done a lot of study on local pollinator species, and I have been giving out their list of pollinator species plants to everybody who comes in, who's going to do landscaping, whether it's for a campground, for a parking lot, or something like that, to introduce pollinator species to help sustain, you know, the collapse of bee populations and things like that, to make sure that without birds and bees, we don't have food. So we lean a little heavy on pollinator species. So that's the provisions of solar. And I'd like to stop there before we get to the next one, if there are any questions.
Hearing, do you want to read X2?
If I may.
Please.
I'm sorry, it just arrived. So am I allowed to ask questions about only this?
Right now, we're going to just ask questions about the first article, which is the large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. Currently, the public hearing is open for that, so please, if you have questions, comments.
No, I'm good. Sorry. I'm good.
Chair, thank you. Sarah Sterns for the Record, 26 Turman Street. Regarding 35 meaning, 32 related to the rain clearing, first of all, thank you all for the participating in the committee, and in both the nice job, and there are a number of you in the room, so thank you for doing this. Just a clarifying question on the 30% of forested land. Because I've worked myself on a lot of interesting sites that present site-specific questions every single time, as we know, I'm assuming the intent of forested land means native vegetation, and the reason I ask is because I have a project site, not in Carver, that was a former Christmas tree farm, and this question has come up. So I'm assuming that that's the intention of their industry on tree removal for a specific purpose.
My understanding was the nature of carbon sequestration in regards to trees, but if it was a Christmas tree farm, I would expect that's a commercial application, and I would be surprised if that's considered forested, but.
Yeah, we don't have a definition of forested land, but the general concern is about the benefit the trees have, both in carbon dioxide change and in carbon sequestration. So even a mature Christmas tree, be a tree that would be worth saving for purposes of water management and carbon sequestration.
So if you had 15 acres of land, some of it's cranberries and some of it's not, maybe, let's just say 10 acres of it is forested land, it's limited to the clearance of three acres regardless of the size of the 15-acre lot, so is.
I think I get it.
Okay.
It may just take a little time to get used to, I think.
Right, right.
It does feel foreign, so thank you for entertaining my very specific question. I'm sure there'll be more.
Excuse me?
Please.
Yeah? I'm Jen Bogart, 116 Cranberry Road, speaking as a resident and a former planning board member, specifically about Section 3580-25-1, the setbacks. For those who haven't heard me speak about this, the whole provision about reducing the setbacks if a butter's signed waivers came about from a project at 72 Center Street when there were abutting properties upon Harvest View Way. That to achieve the screening required by the bylaw, the screening could not be put on the array's property. So to help that project happen, the planning board at the time got the idea to, what if the neighbors, the abutters, can come to an agreement with the developer to put the screening on their land? If they signed a waiver, okay, I'll reduce the screening requirement on your side and I'll put it on my side. And that's how it was proposed to town meeting. Ms. Questle, I know you worked with the board on that at the time, and that's how the board applied it when I was on the board. After I left the board, I know that it had been interpreted or applied differently, and not every single abutter to the project in its entirety had to sign this waiver anymore. As the original one, everybody had to. And from my following the progress of the board, that seems to have led to some legal challenges because the bylaw was applied differently than written, the intent of it. So as it's changed, it seems to me that it reads more for personal preference of, I have an array, I'm in a butter, if I'm cool with you reducing the setback or screening, I'll just sign a paper, has nothing to do with the amount of screening required. And that's how that provision of the bylaw was written. It has led to problems. I don't see any other bylaws letting abutters have control. Oh, I need, my shed has to be X amount of feet from my property line, let me just have my neighbors sign off on it. In my opinion, this is not meeting the intent of the original version, and I would ask the board to consider removing Part A in its entirety, not reworking and rewording it, so it goes from all of the abutters to the project need to sign off to specific abutters now can, so the setbacks will vary throughout a project or they can, that's what's happening now. I would request that since the original intent of the bylaw, when that measure was added, is no longer being applied or met, that I would suggest and request that you consider just removing A entirely.
Are you requesting that we remove A entirely as proposed and return to the original article of A, or are you requesting that we get rid of Article A entire?
As it's written, because there's been confusion and ambiguity and changes in how Part A was applied, I would suggest. applied, I would suggest removing it completely, unless other language can be thought of to make it very clear that if the setback or screening requirements are waived, it is specifically to achieve that in another way. So the 100% screening has to be met or a setback, not just personal preference. And the original wording of it has caused problems in the way it was applied, so I think it should just be removed entirely because it has been ambiguous, problematic, and the way it's applied is changing and has brought legal problems. So I request you consider that.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any thoughts on the subject?
Yes, Sabry Moore, 12 South Main Street, I was a member of the committee, as you all know. While Jen may be correct in what the intent was when it was first put onto the bylaws years ago, I think during our conversations, we felt that the intent had changed to allow an abutter who may have undevelopable property along the perimeter of a potential solar site to be able to waive the 200 feet because it will not affect his view or anyone's potential view in the future. If I'm a property owner and I have a reservoir that will never be built upon, that's abutting property where solar wants to go, if the solar company comes to me and says, "Can I go 50 feet away from your reservoir?", I think that I, you know, as that reservoir owner, I have the right to say, "Yes, you can," because it's not going to affect me and it won't affect anybody in the future. That's why I think the, that's what I think the revised intent of this particular part of the bylaws. Thank you.
So do you feel we should be more specific in undeveloped land, or... Otherwise...
I think you have to give the residents the benefit of the doubt of making a good decision for themselves. You know, if I have a house, I'm not going to give you the 50 feet. If I have a house overlooking the bog, I want the 200 feet, I want the screening, I want the... I think you have to trust the abutter to make a decision that's best for himself. There's no one that had a gun to his or her head from the developer saying, "You've got to do this." I think that you let the homeowner or the abutter make the decision himself as to whether they think that that's something that they can allow.
Do you feel that this will become a money issue then? In other words, pay to play?
No, I would think that, that almost, if not 100%, the full majority of people who would be impacted by this will not allow the 50-foot. I think if someone who has a budding property that it could be out of sight around the corner and would never be developed and doesn't affect anybody else's view, those are the ones who are going to say yes. I don't see this as being a major issue going forward. I think most people are not going to want it 50 feet away, especially if they can see it. And I think that was the new intent, was for those people who it doesn't affect, to allow it.
Because if I was selling my house, and I knew I was selling my house, and somebody comes up and says, "We'd like to put this," well, I'm sorry...
That's the 5%. That's the minority.
All right. All right. I was gonna just, I know everybody here doesn't have copies because most of it was online, so I would just like to go through really quickly. It's just the changes, and we can, anybody that has questions or comments is, please welcome to raise your hand. So one of the things we're adding in the first chapter, in the first paragraph, is to include conventional and dual-use under all the solar. One of our next changes in the next paragraph is that the requirements of solar shall follow the guidelines set forth by the Mass Department of Energy Resources, the DEP, CEC, Clean Energy Results, ground-mounted solar PV systems. So we're requiring a little bit more information. On our next page, basically, we're upgrading the information the planning board feels is necessary to make an educated decision on these. So that's been added to as far as the requirements for an application in regards to it, so the planning board gets a lot more information. And because of that, we struck out some language that was just reiterating the same thing, so there hasn't really been, we haven't taken away from that section, we've added to it. Please, anytime you want to raise your hands, please feel free. Now, under our operation and maintenance plan, we're adding the words, "repair or replacement of non-functioning panels," in regards to the proponent should submit a plan for the operation and maintenance, which shall include measures for maintaining safe access as well as repair or replacement of non-functioning panels. Our next change was outlined by Ms. Bogart and Mr. Moore in regards to the change from all direct abutters to individual abutters. And the basic of this change is that previously, all direct abutters to the lot, not necessarily the project site, were supposed to have provided a waiver if they wanted reduced setbacks, and what we'll be doing is changing that so that individual abutters individually affected can sign waivers in regards to that.
If I may?
Please.
So one of the issues, and I had this in the previous, during the committee as well, is in the language, it says that the applicants are required to contact all direct abutters affected to establish their willingness to enter into the agreement to weigh the requirements. Signed affidavits must be on file with the planning board. Are we requiring that every individual abutter submit an affidavit, whether they accept or reject, or are we just going to accept that the applicants contacted everyone and are only accepting the affidavits that approve? Please correct me if I'm wrong here. If you, you must, you must submit approved affidavit in order for the reduced setbacks in regards to that specific project, property. So we're not requiring all abutters to sign waivers, just this one specific to the reduced setbacks? Okay, so I, no, I just feel like that we need to strengthen the wording on that just a little bit for the benefit of future boards.
Applicants are required to contact all direct abutters affected. So currently, we require that all abutters in regards to a special permit within 300 feet of the lot, not the specific where the solar panels are going to go, be notified. And now what we're doing is we're quantifying it from, so that individual abutters can sign the waiver. If they don't produce a waiver for that individual abutter, then the reduced setbacks cannot be granted. That's my understanding of where we're at on this.
And I add, there was, this is probably one of the things, I think we might have spent almost night on this, the setback issue, and a fair amount of discussion, and it actually came back to second, that was the draft language, to make sure the folks who are... Yeah, so the applicant has to contact all those direct abutters to see if they're willing to enter into agreement, and if they are, they produce an affidavit, and it comes to the planning board, so the planning board is aware that this particular abutter has agreed to allow the property to be closer to their house based on that signed affidavit. But the people who, and this is one of the conversations we had about, if you don't want to give a waiver, there's a number of people who says, "Well, I don't want to give a waiver, and I'm not going to sign anything." So it's not a requirement for someone to sign an affidavit that says, "I don't want to waive it." Admitted is only for people who want a waiver. So the people who are under chanter operating that 200-foot setback, they would not be signing anything because they wouldn't need to, only those folks who wanted to waive this setback.
Now, this particular paragraph also contains the reduction to a minimum of 50 feet along the common border, which is one of the changes that's affected here. Now, when we open it, after we close the public hearing, we can open it for discussion. All right. One of the next changes, the original language was, "setbacks to be reduced to a minimum of 12 and 1/2 feet by right where abutting arrays are proposed in mutual partnership ownership that transcend existing laws." That is going to be changed to setbacks to be reduced to a minimum of 12 and 1/2 feet by right where arrays are proposed in a joint application by owners or common ownership of abutting properties. So if people own abutting properties, they can request that the minimum setbacks is 12 and 1/2 feet. That's, 12 and 1/2 feet's currently the standard. We're changing it from mutual partnership or ownership to a joint application. Our next change is we'll be adding other setbacks. Large solar energy facilities shall be sited at least 150 feet from abutting properties, wells, and septic systems. One of our next changes is Section 3580, 26.3, utility connections. All utility connections from the large-scale solar shall be placed underground. Now, I'm not sure where the changes on this one have, from the original language, I don't have the...
Yeah, so on the screen behind you is the change. So previously, it said, "and would be underground unless soil conditions shape to part of its site and any requirements of the utility provider." And we heard from the utility provider that they don't have a requirement for that unless there's some particular soil conditions. So we took the requirements of the utility provider out and said, "Those conditions and shaped soil would be verified by the town's consulting engineer." So if someone says, "I can't put it underground because of X," then they have to bring that to our consulting engineer, has to verify that those soil conditions exist and that connection has to be there.
Okay, because my understanding of the original language was, "all utility connections from large-scale solar shall be placed underground unless required by the utility." Okay. And we're changing it to, "soil conditions shape and topography of the site is verified by the town's consulting engineer dictate above-ground installation."
Can I shut this door? It's open.
No, no. Right, we gotta leave that door open, I think.
If you don't mind.
No, I just don't want to...
So we'll try not to fuse drop.
And we're adding, "electrical transformers for utility interactions may be above-ground if required by the utility provider."
That was actually 50.
Yeah. The next section we'll be adding is about glare, which we've previously discussed. Photovoltaic modules should be positioned in a way that minimize glare to the greatest practical extent on a residence or public way at any time during the day. 3580-32...
Do we have a paragraph for that?
In what?
For glare?
Glare?
Yeah.
Page five.
All right, yeah, yeah, but it's just, it's just, it's just kind of floating out there as a note.
Yeah, it's under, you know, we look to plug places in, so we sort of plugged it in under the hazardous materials section just because folks might consider glare a hazard, but it was more of an editorial decision over to plug it in at, but it's parked there under 2580, 264.
That's, that's the, the question as far as should we give it its own number, or...
I don't think it would be a big issue to give it its own number. Would it be...
Nope, I can put a 4.10 next to it.
Could you just add it to the 26.3?
Yeah.
With utility connections?
Well, above, it says 2580, 26.4, so we'll just make layer 2580, 26.41, or 25.5.
Five. All right.
Easy enough.
In 3580-32, land clearing and soil erosion, we're requiring a pre-construction conference to discuss the limits and requirements upon of land clearing, habitat impacts, and soil erosion with the applicant prior to building. We're also adding a section about clearing of natural vegetation. Not more than 30% of forested land up to a minimum of 5 acres per lot shall be deforested for anyone large scale. And then we talk about the mitigations, which include wild flower, meadows, habitats, and pollinator species. I think Mr. Bott covered it quite well. And no clearing or site work can begin prior to a pre-construction conference held with the applicant, their contractors, and town staff, including building commissioner, conservation agent, and town planner. We're adding, well, we're changing the control of vegetation from... The Agricultural Commission and Board of Health are to approve all proposed herbicides, to use of chemical herbicides or pesticide is limited to those approved by the Department of Agriculture Pesticide Bureau. 3580-41, large-scale installation conditions. We're adding the words in regards to maintenance. They shall maintain the facility in good condition, including or not limited to, and we've added the words, "repair or replacement of non-functioning panels." We're also adding 3580.50, change of ownership. Ownership changes. If there is a change of ownership, the new owner or operator shall notify the building commissioner of such a change within 14 days, and they must provide such a notification to the building commissioner in writing and meet with any permitting authority from the original applicant, from which the original applicant received a permit, which might be the planning board, conservation commission, I expect the Board of Health, and there might be a few others. In regards to removal of large-scale solar, we're adding the words, "include the use of pollinator species and cranberry plants, especially for dual-use installation." And then on the last page, "the planning board may reduce setbacks and note, but no instance shall setbacks be less than 25 feet." We're changing 25 to 50 feet. We're changing 25 to 50 feet. And under 2C, to allow setbacks of a minimum of 25 feet, and we're changing it again to 50 feet.
I have a comment.
Please.
It's just a technical thing, but I forget which slide it was, but it was one of the ones you were just going over. I think it said 3850 instead of 3580. I think, I think it's supposed to be 3580, though. It's just one of the headings.
Thank you very much. And herein, we run into an issue, and it's one Ms. Bogart, Mr. Moore brought up. In regards to. Page four. Yes, because.
Abutters.
Right. We're back to the abutter issue because our last, our last page here includes the language to allow setbacks of a minimum 50 feet, provided standard setbacks and screening requirements are waived in writing by all direct abutters in an RA zoning district. And then that comes back to what we discussed earlier in regards to individual or group waivers. So during discussion, we'll have to discuss that.
Have to adjust that, yeah.
All right. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Please.
Don't A and B on this slide have read? One says 50, the other says 12.5.
I'm sorry, on this slide?
A says 50 to a abutter.
Okay.
And then B says 12.5, do you want us to read?
That's a joint application between owners of abutting properties. They can apply for a joint application rather than applying for two individual applications, and that will give them the ability to request a smaller setback of 12 and 1/2 feet. So if you own two properties, and they'd be able to put the solar panels like this rather than further apart.
Mr. Chair? I wondered if you wanted to put any, any words that say between the two arrays?
I, I was.
Therefore, it's not 12.5 around the entire.
Yes, I was, I was, that was.
You could say setbacks, comma, between the two arrays to be reduced.
Where? 3580, 25, what?
Setback to be reduced.
The proposal is setbacks to be reduced to a minimum of 12.5 feet by right where abutting arrays? Or?
Are we, are you talking about 2B, or are you talking about?
2B.
I think it's.
1B.
Yep.
Yeah.
1B, isn't it?
No, well, that's just it. We talking about 3580, 70, 2B, or we talking about 3580?
Well, it would, it would have to include, it would have to include both of these. Right, because again, the language in 2B on page eight.
Links to?
To allow setbacks of a minimum of 12 and 1/2 feet if arrays are abutting, a bog, or other agricultural use is defined, provided standard setback and screening requirements are waived in writing by all direct abutters in a residential agricultural zoning district. Abutting, all direct abutters, all direct abutters. Ms. Questel, so is your recommendation?
Yes, my, mine is back on page four.
Yep.
Is that setbacks between arrays should be reduced. So that means that only the setbacks that where an array is abutting another array can be 12.5.
All right. So during, we can, we'll have to handle that during discussion, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm sorry?
We'll have to handle that during discussion.
Sure. Or it's, it's up to you. You can do it during the public hearing. But it's up to you.
Oh.
It's going to require a vote. Hmm? That'll require a vote to add?
They will require votes. All right. I have, I just want to check and see if the, if we have.
So the original language removed abutting between, right before arrays.
Between arrays is, is a little more specific. Arrays. All right. All right, so, so we've covered, we've covered it all, and, and we're allowed to discuss?
Yes.
And make motions during the public hearing?
You could, yes.
Okay.
Public comment?
Yes, please.
Sean Bogart, 116 Cranberry Road. I'm sorry to drag this out when you took so long to take thinking about this. 3580.26.3, the utility connections. Personally, I'd like to maybe make some recommendations on some additional changes to that. For one, you've already struck out the requirements of the utility provider. You might as well strike out the last sentence as well, the transformers may be above-ground if required by the utility provider. It's effectively the same thing. And in general, these solar sites, they're actually not hanging transformers on poles for the interconnection. So that could be eliminated and would probably help mitigate any problems down the road. Also, I would like to recommend changing the, or adding some verbiage to the remaining sentence that's there, to say all utility connections, and then inserting, including associated equipment, and then continue from the LSGMSPI, and then insert as well as utility-owned equipment. And then continue, shall be placed underground, and then insert and/or pad-mounted. The majority, when you say underground, I think everybody's probably on the same page that you're really referring to pad-mounted equipment. The wire would be underground or in the ground, if you will, but the equipment that's required for the interconnection would be pad-mounted, not necessarily underground. That would involve installing like a vault where you, a person would go underground. So maybe to clear up any potential further complications down the road where somebody might want to pull that apart and say, oh, we can't go underground because there's some rocks, or there's not enough room to build a vault. It's not that it's underground, technically that equipment is on the ground, pad-mounted.
So.
I can give you the sentence, I wrote it in my chicken scratcher, I can read it all again in the long sentence if you like.
I think I got the general gist of it. Now, how would the connection be made from the pad-mounted equipment to the?
Yeah, obviously, there's still, and we, you've gone over this on many of the solar sites, there's still going to be a pole somewhere involved. The Cranberry Road is a perfect example, and I think about it because I see it every day because I drive by it. That site, they had, we were told by Borrego that everything was going to be pad-mounted, or underground, pad-mounted, same thing as far as that. And there was to be one pole, and they, so the wire has to come across the street in that case, and then there would be one pole that would then take it underground. So there effectively has to be a transition from overhead to underground, no matter what, at every installation you have that. So that doesn't go away. I don't know how you're going to, you need to add that in.
That, us require, if we required it to be pad-mounted, there is still the expectation that there has to be an interconnection, so, but I think this particular paragraph is working to limit the amount of telephone poles and its effect on both the environment and the rural character of town.
Right, it is. I agree. But I see coming down the road, I think you could add some words to that to reduce complications down the road when the solar company tells you, oh, we can't go underground, when you're really referring to pad-mounted gear, not underground equipment. There is a difference, I, I can just see that becoming a complication.
Right, yep.
So you're saying it should be right like underground, pad-mounted connection?
Right, yeah. Just add it in, and/or, I don't know if you guys like and/or's, if that's not a good.
Because like you said, yeah, when you go, if you don't put the pad in there, they'll nick and pick and say, we can't do that.
Right, right.
And if you put down underground, pad-mounted, interconnection.
Yep.
That means it's got to be right there for the, and start to make the connection, that's it.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
Maybe I could.
Mr. Mackey.
Pad-mounted usually means that the transformer or utilities set on a concrete pad, they're above ground, but they're on the ground. Underground would be an underground vault or a manhole. And, and then even on poles, there are connections that the transformer is on top of the pole. They have utilities on top of the pole. So there's, you know, there's different ways that they can go here, but that's sort of between the planning board and the electric company, I would think, and, and the design people, you know, the engineers that are proposing the project. But, so, you know, there are several ways to, to go. I mean, you could go from a manhole, you could go under the road, up a pole. It all depends on where the poles are, how they can connect to the, the wires, if they are across the street. So I don't really know if you can really make that any more.
Well, we want.
Descriptive than.
Tearing up the rules.
Right there, because then it kind of limits you to what you can do, you know, really up to the, to the planning board to take a look at it and discuss that. And now that we have, that we've spoken to the electric company, we've, Tom does have some people that we can, that the planning board can call and, and actually, you know, ask questions, so.
Our prior requirement was that it be underground, but it seems that the majority of them ended up pole-mounted or above-ground.
Well, I mean, the line from the solar to the street is supposed to be underground by a bylaws. But then, once it gets to the street, then the electric company, you know, has to figure out how they're going to get to the, to the main lines.
If I may interrupt here, that is the existing bylaw right there. That's what it says. All utility connections shall be placed on the ground. You're correct, that's not been happened.
Yes, but, but we don't interrupt. We don't interrupt, so.
Yeah, so, so what I'm saying is, is from the solar field to the street, and then, then there's the connection, and how that connection's made, that, it, it does say there, but generally, that's taken from, from, it goes across the property, the owner's property, to the street, which is a public way, and then from there, that's when the electric company takes over from there. But I was just trying to show.
No, thank you.
Say that there was some difference between pad-mounted, pad-mounted, mounted, and we did have a project where, I think they did propose, I think it was on Meadow Street, where they proposed a manhole, so that was different, and, and then some, they just go to poles before they go to.
The Meadow Street, I think it, it was above-ground for a foot or two feet. It wasn't a manhole, but it was, the equipment was underneath, but the cover itself.
Yeah, maybe they had to raise it because of water table, or whatever reason, or how they had to make the connection to the street.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Bogart.
Yeah, I mean, that's really just talking about all the equipment. You've seen, the solar sites in Carver haven't been as bad, some of them are area, and as you've seen, you know, you've got a dozen poles going in, a whole farm into a site, it's, it's ugly, it's disgusting. And there's no reason why that equipment can't be pad-mounted equipment.
We've seen it.
And just, I think if you added some words to that, you could really strengthen it, you could clarify it. That's still ambiguous, and I just am afraid that someone's going to come and say, oh, we can't go underground, and when you really meant pad-mounted gear. That's all.
Now, we see it in residential subdivisions, everything's underground until the interconnection, and then you'll see the, the large metal box sits there for the interconnection, and that allows.
And there's still a pole somewhere that transfers that some over at the underground, so.
Usually at the, the main street.
Yeah, and it would be the same thing for the solar sites. I don't think anybody's arguing, you know, one or two poles that it has to make that transition. But it's about getting all of that equipment out of the sky.
All right. Any further concerns, questions? How do we handle the editing process, amending?
So the editing process has, the warrant hasn't been.
Is not.
So, yeah, you would make the changes and then.
So I would accept the motion, and we would enter discussion, but would that mean that the public hearing is closed?
Did you do a separate public hearing for each, or did you do one public hearing for all of them?
We did one public hearing for all of them. Last year, what we did, I think, is we went through the articles, and at the end of each one, closed the public hearing to minimize, you know, the board still has the opportunity to debate that, rather than some coming back an hour after the fact.
Yeah. So, yeah, I would do that. I would close it, and we could do it all at the end.
Close the public hearing.
For this one, for X1.
Yep. And then discuss amendments.
Yes, you could do that, or, I don't mean to be.
No, no, I just want to make sure that procedurally.
You can do it however you would like to, Mr. Chair. You could, if the public meeting is still going to be open, so you can close X1, move on to X2, and finish them all, and then make, then discuss them all, or you can close X1 and discuss X1, and then move on to X2.
Okay. So, so let's do it individually while it's fresh in our minds, so.
Because this is a big one.
So any further questions or comments? Now's your chance. All right, so the, the chair will accept a motion to close the public hearing on Article X1, amend Carver zoning bylaw, Section 3580, large-scale ground-mounted solar voltaic installations. So moved, motion made by Ms. Gavsky. A seconded by Ms. Sordillo. All right, so the questions that have arisen start on page four and page eight. We've heard concerns in regards to Section A, and how's page eight, 3580, 70, 2B, and C go, are directly related to this. So, board's thoughts? Ms. Sordillo, how do you feel about the new language as opposed to the old language?
I would go with the new language. I think it's more specific.
I would go with the new language, I think it's more specific, and less controversial.
All right. Mr. Dye, Ms. Gavsky, that, that feel appropriate to you, the new language, for specifically A?
Okay, we're talking about...
We can adjust, amend, or change, or turn it down.
Okay, we're talking about 3580, 25A, right?
It's open for discussion.
Yeah, well, like you said, this is the one that I thought that felt like it.
So you would like to see the new language include required to contact all direct abutters affected?
If I may.
Please.
The language now says the applicants are required to contact all direct abutters affected to establish their willingness to enter an agreement and waive requirements. So they are required to contact all the abutters, but they are only required to produce an affidavit for those folks who are willing to waive the setback requirement.
But they're only required to contact direct abutters, and direct abutters appears to now be defined as along their common border of the project. Is that correct? Because that, that is what I'm hoping the language is changing because of the...
Well, we did request the definition of direct abutters. Now, is, is it project, or is it lot? Because as far as the board is concerned, the lot is part of the project, because the lot is required in order to do a project.
Right. So it would be, if you have square, and you're, and they're only seeking to reduce the setbacks on the bottom, then they only have to contact the abutters across that street, not all sides?
Right, that's, that's what we're trying to...
Right, okay. So I, I think that you're doing that when you, when you put in the words "common border." That's kind of what we were, I was looking for at the land court, in the land court case.
Okay. And I believe we have to define direct abutters as anybody immediately adjacent to the lot.
So the definition of direct abutters, it's been included in the next section on some new definitions, because you put definitions in their own spot. It's, "Direct abut, owner of property, as shown on most recently applicable tax list, is adjacent to the property for property-seeking requirement."
Right, so the way that this is written is you only need the signatures of direct abutters that are affected.
Okay.
So you don't need all of, like, it's just, it's exactly what Mr. Bott said. You don't need all signatures of all of these direct abutters, just the direct abutters with a common border bound to them.
Okay. Personally, I would like to see the last sentence of that paragraph, that 100% screening must be achieved within the reduced setback.
Were you?
Section A, the new language, I want to make sure that 100% screening can be achieved within a reduced setback, because I think part of the whole 200-feet setback was to ensure that screening could be achieved in that area, as well as the separation from the abutting properties. So even though they can waive the requirements for setbacks, they can't waive the requirements for screening?
Well, I think, what currently what it says is direct abutters have the option of reducing the setback by providing a signed affidavit waiving screening, standard setbacks and screening requirements.
Well, then, I would, I would, I would like to see "and screening requirements removed."
I, I don't know, I tend to disagree. As a, as an owner, if I'm willing to waive the setback...
Johnny, you're gonna have to speak up.
Ah, I apologize. As an owner, if I'm willing to waive the setback, then why can I not view the solar panels if I so choose?
I suppose you have a point there.
But the, so the other, the, as far as the last line on this one, what I would like to see is that the affidavits that are on file be provided to the planning board at the initial, when they come, when they come in for the special permit.
All right, so, by providing a signed affidavit to the planning board?
Yes.
That waives...
So that we, so that we can actually see the special, the waivers.
If I may, once again, so the language under, under A for direct abutters goes on the state, yeah, is required to correct, contact all direct abutters affected to establish their willingness to enter an agreement to waive the requirements. Signed affidavits must be on file with the planning board and referenced in the special permit decision. So if we write "special permit decision," it will note that there is an affidavit.
I understand that, but as a planning board member, I would like to see, I would like them to, I would like the, they should be included in whatever package they're presenting to us.
I agree, I think that should be part of the, the package anyways. So if we don't have them in our hands when it's time to vote...
Right.
Then...
They don't get it.
They don't exist.
Right.
Okay. All right.
So, could you, maybe you're trying to add "signed affidavits must be provided to the planning board and must be on file with the planning board and referenced in the special permit decision?"
That sounds perfect. Signed affidis must be provided...
To the planning board. And must be...
Must be provided to the planning board and must be on file with the planning board and referenced in the decision, special permit decision.
That's what I got. Signed affidavits must be provided to the planning board and on file with the planning board and referenced in the special permit decision.
I think that language works for me.
Yep.
All right. So we're all in favor of, of that amendment?
Yes.
So we'll have to turn to page eight, and address 3580, 72C. It's actually the last sentence on, of our end of...
We're getting that one?
The very last sentence on page eight, 3580.70, number 2C. "To allow setbacks of a minimum 50 feet, provided standard setbacks and screening requirements are waived in writing..."
Remove all.
"...by all direct abutters in a residential agricultural zoning district." And then I think we're gonna have to change the word "all" to "affected."
I was wondering if that cannot be deleted, because it would fall under 20, it would fall under 26, or 251A, because in the beginning, in under 3580.10, we state the LGS...
Oh, because we're adding that language. So, because we're adding that language, we, yes, okay.
So you can delete that, because it's covered, but you have to keep B, because the bog and agriculture is not covered earlier.
We have to keep which one?
Keep B.
Yes.
Keep, keep 2B, but you can get rid of all 2C, I think.
Delete 2C?
All right.
Yeah. Otherwise, we're looking at a significant rewrite on that.
Right.
So what you would have to do is take all out of it, and that's all.
Oh, that's what I thought, too.
That makes sense.
All right. All right, so we're back on page four.
So just to clarify, are you comfortable with taking 2C and deleting that? To allow a minimum setbacks of 25 to 50 feet provided all standard setbacks, because this is now included previously, and we referenced it to bylaw for dual use as well
Well, then we would have to add the word "smart slash dual use" in the very opening sentence. No? Or "smart slash dual use." In the very, under purpose, so we add the word "smart slash dual use" there?
Including conventional dual use and smart.
Why would "smart slash dual use," just like it's listed on the...
All right, so including conventional and smart slash dual use in 3510 for purposes, and so we can take out 2C back in.
And that's, and that's fine. All right. So we're gonna go back to page four, section 3580, 25.1. "Setbacks between arrays to be reduced to a minimum of 12.5 feet by right where arrays are proposed in a joint application by owners or common ownership of abutting properties." And the language should be mirrored under 2B.
2B is just their abutting border for instance.
Right, so to allow setbacks of a minimum of 12 and a half feet, to allow setbacks between arrays... To allow setbacks of a minimum of 12.5 feet between arrays, no, I, I'm...
I don't see, I don't see 2B being anything, it has to do with other arrays, arrays. It's just, if you have one array, but it's a smart or dual-use array, if it's abutting a bog or another agricultural use, you can do 12.5 step back. That's how I read it, right now.
And then it goes on to say, "Waived in writing by all direct abutters," which would have to be waived in writing by...
Yeah, we would have to change that to...
Affected.
Affected abutters.
Direct abutters in a residential agricultural zone.
All affected direct abutters.
Now, Ms. Kessel, here's a question for you. Say I allow the redo, we allow the reduced setbacks, and, and I'm a neighbor on the bog, I'm not a direct abutter because, say, a 14-foot bog easement, or owned by somebody else runs between it. When I reduce it to 50 feet, that's still gonna affect me, because I'm 14 feet out of that.
You're reducing it to 12 and a half feet.
No, I mean, right, so if I'm in a abutter, but not a direct abutter, say there's a road between us, where does that fall in?
So the only way that this, the only way that 2B on page eight could work is if a bog or agricultural use is the only abutter to that common boundary, in my opinion.
Okay. So we're gonna change that one to "in writing by affected direct abutters." So we're gonna go back to, to page four and, and 3580, 251A. So how would that scenario affect somebody in that, in that particular scenario?
So direct abutter is defined as, is defined as the owner across the street, but, but the words that are in the new definition say that the, on file with the assessors, or it's whatever the assessors have as the owner. So it would be the owner of the fee, not any easement owner.
It would be the owner of the...
The fee, the fee, the underlying, the underlying property.
Well, it, it's, just say he owns a 25-foot bog growth, and he allows that reduction down to 50 feet. My house is right on the other side of that 25 feet.
It is not, you are not a direct abutter, not, because you are not...
Okay, so I have no recourse.
Right.
Okay. Now, I just want everybody to understand where we're at with this, so that that person can be affected from his, well, 200-foot setback, but it would be somewhat less.
I guess.
But he would, he would have no ability for recourse...
Yeah.
Because somebody owns a strip of land between.
Yeah.
And we're still, we're still satisfied with that language?
Talking about the 12 and a half feet, or are we talking about the 50 feet?
I'm also...
Ms. Gavsky?
Uh, yeah.
All right. Uh, so...
Yeah, do you want, do you want to take a vote while we, while we're at it, without recommending a town meeting, as mentioned?
No, I'm just saying that you caught up, because we still have a couple more things to...
Yeah, I got it.
All right. All right, on page five, section 3580, 26.3, concerns were raised on that, including addition of language, including associated equipment and utility equipment underground Personally, I would like to see everything after. "All utility connections from large-scale solar shall be placed underground, including associated equipment and utility equipment, underground or pad-mounted, period."
Let me go over that again?
I would like, 3580, 26.3, my recommendation is to change it to "utility connections." "All utility connections from large-scale solar, including associated equipment and utility equipment, shall be placed underground or pad-mounted." Something along those lines. Personally, I, I don't see any sense, I, I don't think soil conditions shape a topography. I think that's a, a variance, and it should be treated as such.
I feel the same way. I think it's what the bylaw says, is have everything underground. I don't know why we have any more wording in there. So I, I would like to keep it, you know, all connections underground or pad-mounted.
Electrical transformers for the utility and connections may be above ground if required by the utility provider, that's fine. Thoughts, Alan?
Some, you know, it sounds like it makes more sense than the underground.
Yeah, because I think that was the, the purpose of it.
Yeah.
I mean, somebody can come in and request a variance, but I think it, we'd make it pretty clear where the town stands on it. Your thoughts?
It's fine with me.
All right, so if, if it's okay, and I'm getting the wording correctly on this. "Utility connections, all utility connections from the large-scale solar, including associated equipment and utility equipment, shall be placed underground or pad-mounted." If, if, is that pass muster?
Yeah. So my only concern with that is that if, if that is found to be audacious by applicants, that it is backed up by, you know, a local concern, meaning health and safety, et cetera. It's not just for aesthetics.
Oh, to make it look pretty, I, I think part... Oh, to make it look pretty, I, I think part of it, I think, is, uh, the disturbances in regards to, um, the digging, uh, the noise in regards and, and how far it can travel on pole-mounted equipment, um, and, uh, the introduction of, um, contaminants from...
Yeah, well, I mean...
Poles.
I, I gotta be honest with you, all this stuff is, is, when you, when you break it down, it's aesthetics.
Well, I, I think part of this is to, it's to help protect our above and underground water supplies from contamination, uh, the noise that transformers, um, can cause, uh, and I think it would be safer for emergency personnel to deal with if it's within reach and can be readily accessible.
Oh, that part I agree with.
Could, Mr. Chan?
Please.
Um, I think you deal with two different types of electrical things. I think there's the, the electrical that goes over the property and, and that's done by the applicant, but then there's also the other source connection. That's, that's a whole nother thing, I believe. I think emitters, uh, will have to do whatever they do. I mean, is, they're just like, you know, ask her for that in her, in her experience, uh, okay, I guess it, just want to answer that.
Well, I think this was, this was one of the things that we just, that we talked about on this. If we, um, by, by forcing everything underground, one of the things that I remember we talked a lot about was, if the interconnection is on the, if, if the power lines are on the other side of the street and we require everything to be underground, when it comes time to set up the interconnections, that means that they're gonna have to burrow under the street.
No, no, no.
Or trench, or trench across.
No, the interconnection point is where the, uh, it comes out of the property and, and to connects, and usually there's...
Right.
Like a subdivision, there would be a pad-mounted transformer there.
And then it's gotta go to...
We're not precluding poles. We're not requiring that this, once it reaches the street level, a pole to interconnect with the system.
But in your description, everything has to be underground?
We don't...
Or pad, or pad-mounted?
Well, we can leave electrical transformers for utility interconnections maybe above ground if required by the utility provider. That's the last sentence in that.
So, I, the... Just making sure that the, uh, some of the concerns in the meetings were that we didn't burrow under the ground and
Yeah, we don't, we do not want, right. We don't want to be burrowing under the ground, but, um, again, the interconnection point is where the private property ends and the public utility begins. And, and we're requesting that at that interconnection, any equipment be pad-mounted or underground, and from there, it's gotta go up a pole to connect to the above-ground wires. We're not in any sense trying to prohibit that. But we're trying to limit land disturbance and protect above and below-ground, uh, water and, uh, various other aspects of, um, pole-mounted equipment that can be onerous. But it's up to you. I'm looking for a feel on this.
If I may, um, to a town council's point, um, the condition has to be related to health, safety, and welfare. And the information, we've heard the information the DOE or the DEP has, that I read earlier and is on the screen now, uh, says, you know, can these chemicals contained in solar PV...
This isn't about the solar panels. This is about the electrical interconnection point.
So, what contamination from burying a wire under the ground?
Well, there's, there's soil disturbances and you're putting in, um, treated poles and generally, um...
This, this whole thing is a giant soil disturbance, though. I mean, if you're burying, if you're burying it where you're digging a trench to put in, um, a conduit. If you're putting up poles, you're, you're driving poles in through the, in through the ground. It, it, it's all, it's all a disturbance.
But my point is that disturbing the ground doesn't create a hazard. Digging trenches, digging ditches, digging, setting poles, those, you know, we don't have an identified health hazard from, you know, making a trench from digging a hole.
Well, if that wasn't, I'm not talking about digging a trench or digging a hole. We already require all utility interconnections to be underground unless required by the utility company.
We would say to change that, to get rid of the utility company and say, they have to be underground. And if they say it can't be, it has to be verified by our consulting engineer, give us a reason. What is that reason? What are those...
And the reasons that they give are, um, a variance, and it should fall under a variance. Soil conditions, shape, or topography of the site is a variance. And those are the, the basis of a variance, and if, if that's necessary, then they should go seek a variance through public hearing as, as proposed. That's, that's where I'm at. We see a lot of utility poles when they're spread out every couple hundred feet down the road don't really have a gross effect, but some of these projects add fourteen or more poles containing contaminated equip, uh, wood in any sense of the word, um, in a very small, um, compacted area. That fourteen poles in, what, twenty, uh, within fifty feet? It, it, it seems very aggressive, but the language is already there in regards to all utility quest, uh, should be underground. And we're just trying to clarify that, I thought.
Yeah.
I know there was a large uproar in town in regards to, um, treated poles, arsenic-treated poles being put in, uh, very compact area and, and around wetlands. And that was an issue.
And if I can, so I got a copy of that report. It's, uh, in, uh, from our conservation agent, uh, when they pulled the poles out from the bog. And, uh, the issues they had were, there was some contamination around a couple of the poles, poles that had been fractured, actually, I think when they were removing them. And the, the analysis of the soil showed trace amounts of those chemicals within a couple inches of the hole. Trace amounts, couple inches of the hole, isn't, uh, isn't...
But it, the, I, I would, I would suggest that the study is somewhat flawed because it was not a functioning bog at that point. They, they drove, but they, but they drove everything into the ground and then they left the bog alone. It wasn't an act, it wasn't a working bog. They, they weren't flooding the bogs or doing anything that a normal, would be normal bog activity, uh, for that thing. So I, I would say that that's a little bit on the flawed side, um, but...
So, what's the board's opinion?
What's, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I would...
Do we keep the original language? Do we go with the current, uh, proposed language, or do we modify that?
I mean, I would say, I, I think we should, um, go with the, um, what we have here and then add, um, the associated equipment.
And if it's not to be underground, are we gonna require a variance in regards to that? Or is that just something we just, like we've always been doing, waiving it? Because frankly, we haven't really done well in regards to that particular section of the bylaws, in, in my opinion, and I, I feel...
Well, I, I'm okay with requiring a, a variance.
But who decides what are the soil is, the soil conditions?
Well, they...
NSTAR?
They would have to, no...
I mean, you couldn't say NSTAR, that's not their field.
Well, they would have to apply for a variance.
Higher, higher...
Well, if they came, if they come to us and say that we can't put it underground, then we say, okay.
And what's the reason, what's the reason for going underground?
No, if, if they say that they can't put it underground, then we say, okay, apply for a variance, and then they'll have to go for a variance.
And I believe that would be done to the ZBA? Ms. Questle, thoughts?
I prefer, uh, considering the, um, the atmosphere right now with regard to solar, I did write down your concerns for, you know, for above-ground poles. Um, and when the attorney general asks me about it, I can tell her because I know that she will ask me the reason for that change. I would prefer if there was some kind of waiver provision at least, maybe a two-thirds or a supermajority of the planning board can waive it upon a recommendation from the town's consulting engineer or something to that effect, rather than having them go to get a variance, because a variance is very hard to get. They're supposed to be granted sparingly. The, the, the Carver zoning board of appeals is, is very savvy with regard to, they know, they know the law. And I'm not really sure how, how this can be, I mean, they, I, they have to, I guess, prove the size, shape, topography, that only affects their lot, not other lots in the neighborhood. That's part of the variance provision. They have to have hardship and it has to not derogate from the intent of the bylaw. I am a little concerned with the third prong because the bylaw specifically stated it has to be underground.
Right.
So I think they would have a hard time proving they're not derogating from it. The other thing, yeah, the other thing that, um, and this, this has, there's no slight on, on the ZBA on this at all, but the planning board, historically and throughout the Commonwealth, are usually the special prime grant authority for solar. So, the planning board knows a lot more. For example, as you're talking tonight and you're talking about prior projects and you guys, I think, would be the better board to waive anything.
Okay.
Um, that would be my recommendation.
Fair enough. Um, but for all intents and purposes, we're asking them to meet the requirements of a variance. Alright.
Um, no, you're not, because you're only telling them that they have to come in with soil shape or topography. They don't have to prove hardship and they don't have to prove that they're not substantially derogating from the bylaw. And that, under the, under section forty-eight, section ten, those are the requirements for a variance. It's a three-prong test. The first prong is soil-shaped topography that only affects your lot, not lots in, in the zoning district. Number two is hardship, financial or otherwise. And number three is not substantially derogating from the, from the intent of the zoning.
Alright, and, and how do we qualify? I mean, is our, our engineer is gonna say they can't put it underground because...
The only thing that I can think of, um, off the top of my head is ledge.
Okay.
There's a lot of ledge, then that won't work, um. And then the other thing is, is the fact that if the utility requires the, um, so the utility right now, um, the, the electrical transformers may be above ground if retired, if required by the utility provider. That would also depend on where the underground, their location depends on where the underground wires would go, so it all comes, it all plays together, I think. So if they do encounter ledge, I'm not sure if they could move things, is what I guess I'm saying.
What about adding the words, "all utility connections from the large-scale solar, including associated equipment and utility equipment, be placed underground or pad-mounted?"
Yes, I think that's great. I think pad-mounted is a good idea.
Okay.
That is, I think that's missing.
Okay. Would that be acceptable in your...
Absolutely.
Yeah. So... So now we have, "all utility connections from the large-scale ground mounted shall be placed underground, including associated equipment, uh, and utility equipment, unless soil conditions..." Correct?
Yeah.
Underground.
Or pad-mounted.
Underground, or, thank you. Underground or pad-mounted.
And then, um, Mr. Bott, unless soil conditions, shape, and topography of the site, that word "as" is not blue, but it is a new word. As verified? "As" is not in the existing, it's minor, very much.
That was, that was, I was testing you. Bill, we'll rule it out.
And dictate? Um, dictate is equivalent of require?
Yes.
Okay. And I think we cleared up the issues on the last page. Right? We handled that.
Did we include language for a waiver?
In regards to...
Are we gonna, are we going to include language for granting a waiver?
I think what it says now is they have to put it there unless they can prove and our consultant town verifies that they don't have any other options. I think that is the...
Okay. Alright. It's fine with me. Alright. You comfortable?
Yes.
Mr. Deion, you're comf...
Yes.
You're comfortable, uh, alright, then the chair will accept a motion to put article X one.
Oh, wait a minute. Are we gonna discuss?
No, that's...
Was there any, was there any discussion for the forested mitigation measures?
What page are you on?
Six.
Page six, uh, clearing of natural vegetation. Not more than thirty percent of forested land up to a maximum of five acres per lot shall be disforested for anyone. Is that, um, Ms. Questle, do you think that that... We're, we're, I think, and, and this is just my opinion, that the intent of this is to reduce the amount of forested land cleared in regards to, okay.
Correct.
So if you had six, if you had, uh, fifty acres, but six of it was forested and you wanted to clear it, you don't be allowed to clear just under two acres of forested land?
Oh, yes, yes, you are, so it's not the total acreage, yes.
Thirty percent, go maximum.
Of the forested land, yes.
Of the forest, and that, that, how, and how do we identify forested land and how do we do it? And where, where does it fall under, in regards to they're gonna apply for solar next year and they just cut down all the, the trees, the forested land?
Well, I think we've already seen, um, in the night one with the, uh, town council, showing us one of those bylaws that require you can't develop a site that's been previously cleared as one of those things that didn't pass muster with the AG.
Right, right, so that's, it kinda makes it null and void to some degree.
There's a, um, large solar arrays field. I go by Rochester, um, around in the Bedford Water Works. There was thousands of dead trees. Now, is that forested? All the pine trees that were killed by the blight, you just cleared them all out. It's probably more than five acres. What is it? Dead blighted tree area that you clear out because they're all dead? Could it be more than five acres? I mean, you're clearing dead trees.
Right, that, I, I, that's important, right. We're trying to figure out what, what is considered forested land, right? And we already had the question... And we already had the question.
Christmas tree farm.
Right.
One of the carburetor.
Yeah, again, I, I think that's a commercial facility. They cut them down every year and that's part of their business, but.
I'll be, I'll be happy to do a little research tonight and bring you a definition of forested land. We can add to the definitions in the next section. Because it seems like the question is, what's the definition of forested land?
Right, yeah. All right.
That looks good.
But, other than that, we're, we feel that we.
Is this the easy half?
Other than that, we feel comfortable with this?
For the forested pine?
No, the entirety of it.
What about repair or replacement of non-functional panels?
All right, where are we at?
Thirty-five eighty dash forty-one.
Thirty-five eighty dash forty-one.
Any questions?
What's your concern?
Well, my concern is a timely replacement, you know? If a panel's not operating, failed, or damaged, I think they should have adequate time to replace that panel and not just leave it. You got a cost benefit here, I got one panel out, I'm in New Jersey. No, and I understand that, but I mean, we have an instance like on forty-four there, you got a whole section of panels. I know. It's the ugliest thing you see on forty-four. I'm not putting the panels in, I mean, that, you know. You need a carrot or a stick.
Well, this, this was, this was something that we discussed in the, in the, in the, the committee meetings. And I believe that there is a, there's a reporting requirement, correct, Savory? In the bylaw, I believe it's tier thirty-five eighty forty-three, where they have to include, where the site has to report what's happening with the site to the town. And then, it's at that point that should trigger, okay, you've got X number of panels that are non-functional, replace them.
Well, that's all good, but I believe that is telling panels out there too. And we haven't done anything about it.
Kinda getting off the subject.
Oh, no, he's on, like, thirty-five eighty forty-one, he wants to know.
When the panels are bad, do you just leave them?
Right. Do we think they should be removed? The owners of the panels.
But that's supposed to be a part of the maintenance plan.
But, there's no.
Reporting, reporting, it should be.
So, so let me just break this down. So, my complaint last time was, on forty-four, you have a large section of panels that are out. And the answer was, it's still admitting what is required, so they don't have to replace them.
But that's part of that maintenance plan.
Right. So, what, what makes the difference between all the rest of them? You don't know how it's worded, at least with a bylaw states that if you have damaged panels, they gotta be replaced with a reasonable amount of time, and not just sit there.
We do, it does appear that we, there is, we asked them to repair or replace the non-functional panels, but we don't. There's no requirement in here for removal.
Timeline.
Yeah, if I may, once again, in the discussion we had with, with the committee is, in a field of, you know, making up a number, forty thousand panels, how do you know which of those forty thousand is bad? The operator's gonna know it, and to Don's point, yeah, I got a panel that's bad, but it's not costing me enough money to go out and, and replace that one panel. I'll go out and replace, you know, several panels or something like that when I get enough to make it work my while to change them.
And, and I understand that point, but my, my point more is, what's in view on a daily basis when you're driving down the road such as forty-four?
So.
You, you got thirty panels that are not there?
I'll say forty-four is an incredible outlier, because it was early on in the phase. And somebody apparently decided, because there's four different kinds of panels out there.
That's correct.
That's sort of an orphaned sort of project, I don't know who owns it, who, who did it. But I think that's a considerable outlier. You might, you know, ask permission to go around and take a chore of ten solar arrays that are around the town and try, and likely not gonna find another where somebody's boosted panels and not replaced them. They have to replace them, and it's in their, in their best interest to maintain the efficiency of their operation by replacing panels and not just letting them, you know, be dead. It's one of those things that's very difficult to enforce, because how do we know?
Well, if there's a big anticipation.
Somebody came out and scored a few, yeah, you'd know, but it's part of the non-functioning.
We're requiring an annual reporting, aren't we?
Yep.
To whom?
To the town.
The town.
Yeah, we're probably going to select board, actually had an email about this, and we don't have a hundred percent compliance with that, so we're gonna be sending some letters out to some folks saying, you need to submit your reports, they're required.
Mr. Deion. Where it says, "Owner operates shall maintain the facility in good condition, including but not limited to snow removal, painting, structural repairs. Repair or replacement of non-functional pan, panels, would you annually, in, in conjunction with their report?"
Yeah, that would be. Yeah, I would say annually with their report. Are all the functioning, so parks now covered by this, or the grandfathered with their agreement?
Zoning only applies to future projects. There is a requirement for them to report already in the bylaw, so they already have the complication. Anything we change is for future projects. Compliance with the current bylaw is one of those things they have to do.
So, repair or replacement of non-functional pan, panels on an annual basis? Would that be?
Well, yeah, I mean, if they have to do, do it annual with the town, why not include that in there with it, you know?
Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Is that language acceptable? Any other further questions or concerns?
So, what was our, what was our add-on here?
On section thirty-five eighty dot forty-one, repair or replacement of non-functional panels on an annual basis.
Non-functional panels on an annual basis.
Do we feel, aside from defining forested lands, we're comfortable with where we're at?
Yeah, I am.
How about you, Mr. Gatsky?
Yep.
All right, so. How do we continue this till we're?
So, we got a motion on the floor?
Yeah, we have the motion on.
Let's vote it. I'll send the changes to Amy, make sure I got them all right, and we'll get them back to you guys.
All right. Then we can vote separately on what the definition of forested land is.
That's a separate order.
Okay. All right. The chair will accept a motion to approve.
To make recommendations for favorable action in town meetings that we were interested in.
I, I think that was the motion that was made and, and seconded by Ms. Sordill, so. All right.
All right.
And so, Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
Mr. Gatsky?
John Gatsky says aye.
Ms. Sordill? And Mr. Shea says aye. Our next order of business is Article X two. This is a public hearing. "To amend Carver zoning bylaw, adding a new section thirty-five ninety, battery energy storage systems, and amend section twenty-two thirty, use regulation schedule regarding battery storage, amend Article six definitions, and amend the Carver zoning map to identify areas for such use." To see if the town will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaw by adding a new section thirty-five ninety, battery energy storage systems, as shown in an eight-page document entitled, "Proposed new section thirty-five ninety, battery energy storage systems zoning bylaw from Solar-Battery Storage Moratorium Committee, on file with the town clerk, and further by amending section twenty-two thirty, use regulation schedule regarding battery energy storage, amend Article six definitions to include pertinent definitions, and to amend the Carver zoning map to identify areas for such use or take such, take any other action relative thereto." All right, this is in regards to battery energy storage systems.
I guess some slides on this.
Please. And. Did you want to speak, Mr. Mackey?
No.
Okay.
So, the proposed new section thirty-five ninety battery, battery energy storage facility bylaw was lifted in large part from our very gracious neighbors in Medway. They spent a couple of years and a lot of money on researching this, and we borrow very freely from their information, and we've added some things to it. So, the purpose of the bylaw is to advance and protect the public health, safety, welfare, and quality of life by creating regulations for installation and use of battery energy storage systems with the following objectives. One, to provide a regulatory scheme for the location, construction, operation of battery energy storage systems consistent with best practices and safety protocols. Two, to ensure compatible land uses in the vicinity of the areas affected by battery. And to mitigate any potential impacts on abutting in nearby properties. And three, to mitigate the impacts of battery energy storage systems on environmental resources such as agricultural lands, forests, wildlife, buttons, and other natural resources. This section shall be construed to consist of the state laws, including but not limited to provisions of general laws, chapter forty-eight, section three, state regulations, including but not limited to the provisions of the state building code, state fire code, state electrical code. In the event of any conflict between the provisions of this section and the provisions of state law, the state law and regulations shall prevail. So, what are we going, what are we talking about with battery energy storage? Medway had two tiers, we added a third here in Carver, and we'll talk about a little bit of those in just a second. So, a battery energy storage facility broken into those three tiers. Tier one has an aggregate capacity of less than five, point five megawatt hours. Tier two are energy storage systems that are greater or equal to point zero five megawatts, but less than one megawatt hour, excuse me. And tier three, which are the ones we are gonna be, of the larger scale operations, tier three battery energy storage facilities have an aggregate capacity of greater than one megawatt hour. So, in that case, this is a sort of a depiction of what we're talking about. This container that you see here, this is typical container to pull a one megawatt hour battery. So that's something you might see as part of a larger development. Tier two are those things that are half a megawatt hour. So this is basically something that would fit into a, a container. By the way, this is a, a container is a, for tier three, is an eight-foot wide, this is typical, eight-foot wide, twenty feet long, and eight and a half foot high. So for tier two, this is a half a megawatt container, which is about ten foot wide, eight and a half foot long, and eight and a half foot high. And then, tier ones are battery storage systems that are less than that zero point five megawatt hours. That might include a hundred to two hundred kilowatt cabinet, which is eight, nine feet wide, six and a half feet deep, and eight feet tall, or a sixty megawatt cabinet, which is wide, three and a half foot deep, and eight foot high. What it doesn't incorporate are residential storage. So residential storage is something like this Tesla power mount. It's thirteen point five megawatts, so seventy-four of those would equal one megawatt. But you can't put seventy-four in your house. Essentially, you can put two, maybe three. In this case, the information that I got from, I think, this old house, I didn't go to Tesla for this, because they didn't wanna get into the weave of who knows what. But essentially, a battery storage facility costs for your house about twelve thousand dollars. So, not, they're not gonna be showing up everywhere.
Right.
You gotta have a serious commitment to the environment, or, you know, some disposable income. So I don't think we're gonna see them run amok, but residential storage is not part of the bylaw. Essentially, that is what would be considered an appliance installed based on building code and fire code and local code. So, those use regulations for BSS, tier one would be allowed by right in all zoning categories. Tier two would be allowed by special permit in all categories except for village business and village district. And then tier three battery storage is permitted. And this is the, the language that we had previously, which was, you know, just really weird that the bylaw before said you could have it by special permit or as a permitted use in all these districts. So we eliminated all those and basically said, you can put it in as a special permit use in highly commercial, you can put it in in green business park, you can put it in the IA, IB, IC, as well as the airport district. Now, the thing about large-scale battery energy storage is, we're not likely to see another in Carver. Because they have to really be co-located near an energy substation, like the one on thirty-one R, Main Street. Based on the research I've done and talking to other folks, it costs about three million dollars a mile to run electricity from a battery storage facility, a large-scale battery facility, to transmission lines. So these things tend to be located next to power lines. All the power lines in town go through residential zoning districts. And in my conversations with Eversource about upgrades to the power lines between here and Kingston, are they putting in an additional substation, they're not. So at some point, if someone puts in an additional substation, someone might be eager for another one of these, but they'd have to rezone the land around it, because they're not permitted in residential agriculture. So all of our power lines go through RA, but there's no zoning for them. So we identified them on the site, it's putting them as appropriate districts, industrial districts, green business park. But in the absence of adjacent power lines, there's not a huge likelihood that we're gonna see one, but still you write bylaws for the future. So, setbacks. We always talk about setbacks, so for tier one, and those are those, those smallest ones, will be set back fifty feet on all sides, rear, front, and back. Tier two and tier three battery energy storage, we set back a minimum of two hundred feet from the side rear lot lines that but or across the street from residential zoning districts or existing single, two-family, or multifamily structures. Minimum setback areas shall include a vegetated buffer area at least fifteen feet wide along the property lines. Access drives and parking are allowed in the setback areas, but shall not intrude into the required buffer areas except for necessary provide access or egress to the property. In addition, a minimum of ten foot must be maintained, if within a building, between the BSS component and all stored combustible materials, hazardous materials, and high pot storage. What we think is that most of these things that we see on the pictures here are gonna be located outside. So someone will come to the planning board and say, I'm building a, I'm building a grocery store, I'm building a, a, a pop store, I'm building whatever I'm building, and I wanna put a battery energy storage down there. So it would go through site plan, and it would go through the planning board to review where that is in the site plan, and go to fire and all those sort of folks to make sure they're properly situated, they meet the setbacks, and they're properly protected, likely through bolters and things. So, those are the setbacks that we have talked about in the bylaw. Some additional requirements that over and above what the folks in Medway put in in discussing this with Assistant Deputy Boil. Access roads, this is what a standard condition that the fire department requires for just about any development. Access roads will be at least twelve foot wide, constructed on an all-weather surface. Clear instructions on both sides by at least two feet. Sixteen-foot high vertical clearance will be maintained for large vehicle access. Access gates erected onsite will be at least twelve foot wide, accessible to the Carver Fire. Accessively to the Carver Fire Department's block. And accessible on all four sides of each enclosure should be provided with practical... Another requirement that we added was noise from acoustic study. We provided an order to ensure that increases in sound comply with the Mass D E B's requirement. Meaning any increase in ambient noise to less than 10 decibels at the property line. And the primary source of noise for a battery energy storage is likely the HVAC that's used to cool the evaporation of batteries. We added some additional requirements prior to operations. A commissioning plan, and the commissioning plan is how this thing works before you get to start it up. So, in the commissioning plan, we added that the report describing the results of the system, commissioning, and including the results of the initial acceptance and testing requirements of applicable state codes we invited to the zoning enforcement officer in the Carver Fire Department. Prior to final installation approval and maintain and improve onsite location. In addition, the emergency operations plan. An emergency operations plan compliant with N F P A 855, these are national fire codes, is required, and a copy of that operation plan would be approved by the fire department. Originally, it was says, "A copy of the plan would be given to the fire department." We changed it to say, "A copy of the emergency operations is approved by the fire department will be given to the system owner, the local fire department, and local fire officials." As long as the BSS is operational, the operator should provide the fire department, police department, building commissioner, and town manager's office contact information for personnel to reach within 24 hours per day, every day. And this contact information shall be updated by the operator whenever there's a change in the information. The operator shall also be required to have an official representative onsite no later than two hours after notification by the fire chief, police chief, or any other visiting need. And a permanent copy will also be enclosed in the approved location, accessible to facility personnel, fire code officials, and emergency responders. Ownership changes, much like we did with solar. We added a provision for ownership changes that the owner will have to meet with any permitting authority from its original application, receiving permit. And so, those are the changes that we made to what I think is a very well-developed bylaw in Medway. I've said it a number of times. I'm familiar with the folks in Medway. Your town planner is former town council for a number of towns in private practice. She's a very smart, very thoughtful person. And I'm going to have to send Medway on one of those edible baskets or something, because they saved the town hundreds of thousands of dollars by us sort of pirating their information in their bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. This one is new in its entirety, so I'm not going to read the whole thing. But I am opening it up for questions and comments. All right. I only have one particular one on Section 3590. And that is on page two, 3590.50, Section 1, Utility Lines and Electrical Circuits. I think it should mirror the language from the solar bylaw.
I agree.
It's a...
There's a lot of these, I know that the...
Should it all be underground?
Because these are, especially the tier twos, possibly smaller tier threes are going to be installed with some of these solar sites. There shouldn't be, there should not be any conflicting language between the two.
So, we want to take the language from 3580, 263 Utility Connections, and basically plug it in for Section 1, that utility lines and electrical circuit.
Yes, 3590.5, Section 1.
Page two, get it.
And 3580, 26.3. Questions, concerns, comments?
One of the things that I have issue with is setbacks.
What page do we on?
Page three. Paragraph five.
Paragraph five setbacks.
With regards to tier, especially tier three, I think that a minimum of 200 feet is woefully inadequate with regards to residential lots. In the event of a catastrophic failure or anything else like that, 200 feet's not going to do anything for the people that live nearby with regards to protecting them or protecting their wells.
I don't recall that we have setbacks from wells in regards to this. Mr. Bott, is that correct? I know we did in solar, we said it, 150 feet.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that.
I don't. Protected areas, wells, et cetera. Is that something that you're...
Well, my issue is with the 200 feet. Like I said, I think it's woefully inadequate with regards to especially tier three.
I think...
There's too many incidents throughout the country where these larger systems have failed. And, I mean, as things progress and the technology improves and they become safer, then it's something that can be revisited. But I think that 200 feet from a residential area is woefully inadequate.
What do you feel?
500 feet. When we're looking at, when we're looking at tracing contamination, the, when they start looking for where it's going, they measure in lengths of 500 feet. And given the toxic nature of the current generation of batteries and the high failure rate, there needs to be, there needs to be greater protection for residential.
Are you specifically in regards to lithium ion? I believe they have a new salt, salt...
That has not been, it has not been deployed on a mass scale yet, and it's not going to be deployed here. So, until something new comes along, like I said, it can be revisited every year. But I think to start with, a minimum of 500 feet from residential. And even, and even that, I mean, the, the one that's going, the one that's going up here at Cranberry Point is, most of that is outside that 500 feet. But there is, in the event of a catastrophic event, it's a very large area that's affected.
May I?
Sure.
I would agree, because like Mr. Bott stated, the tier three is such a big unit, it would actually have to be almost close to the substation. So, there would not be any houses around. So, 500 foot shouldn't be a problem.
Thoughts?
I'll refer to council. We were talking about quietly, what my voice carried him to. I haven't run across a 500-foot setback for anything, ever.
Okay, but...
This is new though, isn't it?
This is, this is a newer tech, this is a newer technology. And like I said, it's, there are failures all over the country, all over the world.
So...
I mean, California routinely shuts them down because of...
So, the technology improves as well as the language of things improves. So, I've talked about this as an example of, remember the old-school fire hydrant? She turned upside down and had the hose on to put the fire out. Says, "Don't use on a grease fire." Well, that's essentially what they figured out about these. You shouldn't use them on a grease fire. So, two things that have moved along with, and this is what N P F 855, the National Fire Codes, as they keep adopting those. So, one of the things that happens with thermal runaway is that the gases are off, are given off. They start to collect in that containment structure. Then they ignite for some sort of re... So, while in the past, people put them out with water. They know better than that now. Water is used to keep things around them from burning up, and they use an agent. And sometimes, there's actually a halide system or something within the enclosure. But the biggest innovation are the monitoring of the gases in the containers. So, when those gases start to appear and the sensors pick them up, they shut that system down and then take that sort of action. So, they figured out what are those triggering things? They figured out how to better fight the fire.
Did they figure this out, did they figure this out since December?
I don't know when those other ones were built. I can't say to that. But what I can say too is that there have been some spectacular fires. And like Chicago, where all of these cow kicked over. But they fixed that. Chicago hasn't burned down some places, maybe, but, you know. Technology moves on, things move on. And the fact that we can do what we want to do. And the attorney general can tell us 500 foot is too much. They won't necessarily throw out our entire bylaw. They may line out this section and say, I...
Problem is, is if they don't approve that section, then you don't have that setback, you don't have any setback. The concern is, are tier two or tier three ever associated with solar?
No, because these are standalone battery systems.
Okay. So, then the other concern is the 500 feet. 500 feet is a pretty significant setback that we don't see a lot in zoning. Now, all towns are different, obviously. You know, a 500-foot setback in a coastal town, tiny lots, is a lot different than Carver, where you guys have a lot of land. So, you know, I really can't predict what she will do. But I will say that 500 feet is, you know, virtually unheard of in a zoning bylaw, to have some setback of 500 feet. You think about if there was 500 feet on either side, you know, if there was two, if they abutted residential on two sides. And then, the other thing is, it's important to note that it also has existing single, two-family, or multifamily structures, which I think is important, because we're not just, the setback is not just the zoning district. It's also any existing residential structures that are there.
Right.
Which is important, but if you add the 500 feet to that, you might be precluding, you know, essentially precluding a tier two or tier three in certain areas.
Yeah.
That would otherwise be allowed, because they're in the same industrial or commercial area.
I hunt. I have to be 500 feet away from a house in order to shoot a gun.
But that's not a use, that's an activity.
Okay, well...
You're constantly moving, is what I'm saying. You're not in one spot.
Right, but I can, I can, well, you...
You stand, I guess.
But the thing of it is, 500 feet is not unheard of.
I said it was unheard of in zoning, not, that is, that's a state law. The 500 feet for residential.
But this, we're talking about something that is, has the potential to lock people in their houses or evacuate entire towns if it's catastrophic enough. 500 feet doesn't seem to be too much to ask. That's my feeling on it.
In those battery storage units, you said if some kind of gas, does it put itself out?
The, well, off-gassing is what comes from the battery. So, the battery has a chemical process. When it starts to, when the sensor picks up these gases, it's giving off. It's basically saying, "Something's wrong with this battery. Battery's not operating as supposed to." It's like that check engine light on your car that we just put black tape over and go and deal with. But this is different from these. So, it's basically saying, "There's a problem with this system, because it's giving these gases out." This is the precursor to a fire.
So, would it shut down automatically?
Depending on the operator, they would likely shut that cell down. But if it was to catch on fire, what, they typically have a suppression system within the enclosure, like a ZO, a ZO system or something like that. A H O, basically, it removes all the oxygen.
I know, it's just...
What I want to see, what I want to see is 500. Whatever, whatever anybody else, whatever the rest of the board wants to do is...
They essentially use the water now to keep things wet around the air.
Listen to her, if they kick it out, then there'll be no setback.
Mr. Bott, what are currently the required setbacks for tier two and tier three? Because it...
There are many.
Right.
I only highlighted these in black, just to set them out from the, because I knew people were interested in the, so this is the language from...
Yeah, the only thing we have is a byline right now.
So, the setbacks for Cranberry Point, once again, this zoning is going forward, not retroactive. But I would venture to say the setbacks for Cranberry Point will look like the setbacks for a structure in that district.
But I'm just saying, in the law, it says, in the proposed bylaw, tier two and three shall have a minimum, a setback a minimum 200 feet from side rear and front lotlines that abut or across the street from a residential zoning district or existing. So, what are the setbacks if it's not abutting across the street? Can we standardize that to...
Well, tier one's 50 feet, tier two and tier three are 200 feet.
But it says that abut or across the street. Can we standardize it to 200 feet under all? This is, tier three best shall have a setback a minimum of 200 feet from side rear and front lotlines. Is that problematic in any sense by removing that abut or across the street?
I can see where, I can see where that would have an issue if there is another trans, electrical transfer station, and they're trying to put a battery right next to it. I can see where that would be an issue.
Well, it's here, and basically, I'm asking, standardize it. Like, solar's 200 feet setback from front, rear, and side property lines.
Right.
This one is, that's not the case. That's only the case if they abut or across the street from a residential zone.
Right.
Can we just set it at 200 feet from side rear and front lotlines?
If these are allowed in the business district, right, the tier two, would your lots be far enough? The Tier 2, would your lots be far enough apart if two buildings wanted to each have one? Or the lots not wide enough in the zones where they're allowed? In other words, if you want, this guy has a building, this guy has a building, they both want one of these. But they're inevitably 200 feet apart because the lots aren't that big. So you're then making so they can't do it.
Well, most of these buildings wouldn't have to go... There's not a building in Carver that would need a Tier 3.
You mentioned shaws.
Right. Shaws might need to go to Tier 2.
Right, but do they even have 200 feet from the back of the building where their lot stops?
Right.
I mean, they may not even be able to put one in if they wanted to now because it's 200 feet. The building may only be 100 feet from the lot line, whatever it was. So they can't possibly put one in.
Well, as this sits already, they couldn't anyways because it abuts a residential district.
I don't know, I'm just saying 500 feet.
Oh, yeah.
Nope. That's why I referred to the Tier 3.
Any what?
Well, I'm asking, standardizing the 200 foot. It should be 200 foot setbacks like the solar.
I'm just saying, will it work? Or are you making it so it doesn't work?
No, neither. It's, this is the language that came from the solar bylaw study committee meeting. And I noticed that there's no requirements or standards outside of if it is abuts a residential zoning district. So I want to know what the setbacks are. If it's not abutting a residential district.
Do any of our districts not abut?
Well, sure, we got...
A residential.
Industrial.
So Mr. Chairman, I think it would be considered a structure. The definition of structure shall mean anything constructed or erected in use of which requires fixed location on the ground. And then they have including but not limited to buildings, wireless communication facilities, equipments, swimming pools, satellite dishes, tennis courts and animal enclosures. So the actual definition and the fact that they have, you know, wireless communication facilities and equipment, these would most likely fall as a structure. So they would have the setbacks that were in whatever zone they're in. So in, you know, for example, you know, in industrial, say, so in industrial right now, they would have...
30 feet?
Yeah, 50, 40, 30, yeah. So 30, 30, 50. So the front would be 50 and the rear and the sides would be...
You're saying the battery is a structure?
Well, the enclosure...
The enclosure, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it depends on what the enclosure is, but...
No, that, I think that just defeats the entire purpose of what that bylaw committee, what we were doing in there. To consider the enclosure a structure...
Well, it is.
And then absolutely not. It's a battery energy storage system.
Yes.
And to call, to turn around and call one of these things a structure and then go according to the zoning laws according to a structure, that is going to...
That's what we're trying to clarify right now. That's what I'm saying.
That's a legal nightmare.
Because I don't...
What I'm saying is that there is not zero setbacks is what I'm trying to explain.
Yes.
So there are setbacks. They're the standard, they're the regular setbacks for the zoning district. But they're increased to 200 feet if it's adjacent to residential or abutting residential or a residential structure.
Right. Now, but there's clear safety concerns in regards, health and safety concerns in regards to large, say Tier 3s. And would it be appropriate to allow that to be 30 feet from another's property when it can cause a lot of damage within that?
I'm not suggesting anything. I'm just clearing up here. I just wanted to make it clear that there's not no setbacks. These cannot be put on the property line.
Right. And I'm just asking if those setbacks are appropriate or should we be establishing appropriate setbacks? In other words, should a Tier 3 system be in, allowed to be within a 30 foot setback of a neighboring property?
No.
And what?
And again...
What should those setbacks be?
Well, again, a Tier 3 is what, like, what was that size of the container?
80 foot, 20 foot?
It's Conex.
20 foot long, block foot high.
Yeah.
Small, it's a...
Typical Conex box size.
It's a shipping container, it's a shipping.
Well, that's up to, that's Tier 2, right? That's Tier 3.
Go back to the...
I thought it was bigger than that.
So there's Tier 1.
Oh, it's a Tier 3.
Top perimeter Tier 3. I'm looking at 1 megawatt hour. So 8 foot wide, 20 foot long, 8 and 1/2 foot high. Tier 2 is that basically 10 by 8 by 8.
Okay.
Small shed.
See now, again, the small shed is, I would expect that that would be acceptable within those parameters outside, in a commercial area, 30 feet.
The Tier 3 is my concern because it's such a big unit.
So should we require Tier 3s to be a minimum of 50 feet from property lines under? Right, that would allow room for shaws or most of the...
Or Tier 3.
Tier 2, you mean?
Tier 3, which was the, like, that singular container there would probably run shaws.
You mean Tier 2.
That big one. This is a Tier 2. Larger one was Tier 3.
So you want to do one on Tier 3? With setback?
Would it be appropriate to put that within 30 feet of somebody else's property? Would you feel safe?
I wouldn't want that near my property. I wouldn't feel safe.
And what would appropriate setback?
As far as I could get it.
Well...
You asked me, I'm going to be honest, you know?
Right, then there's the 500 feet.
You know?
But this isn't a shed. It's not a garage. It's a battery storage containment system.
And how much noise is that going to emit? Do we know that? Is it going to emit any noise?
HVAC could prove it.
So you know, you want something 30 feet from your property line buzzing in here all night long?
Don't you have an air conditioner outside of your house buzzing all night to keep you cold in your house?
No, it doesn't buzz.
So...
HVAC sees the noise.
All right. So we got the 200 feet and I would... 200 feet from side rear and front lot lines to the butter or across the street from residential zoning district consisting of single two-family or multifamily structures. Wells, what's the setback in regards to Wells? 150 feet like solar? Or 200 feet? Should it be setback from Wells at all?
Well, we require solar.
I think the setback from Wells should be consistent with solar.
With solar. At minimum, we should be looking at 150 feet. Like the solar.
If you're going to do that, then you're doing the setback at 150.
From the Wells, I think we should definitely at least match it with the, at minimum, match it with the solar.
Okay. Sir, do you have a little thoughts on the subject?
Yeah, I think that, let me just say 150.
150 feet, which would mirror the solar bylaws from Wells?
Yes.
Okay. And maybe if we add setbacks, tiers 1, 2, 3 shall have battery energy storage systems, shall have, shall be setback a minimum of 50 feet from all front, rear and, side rear and front property lines, the first sentence there. And we establish a solid requirement of 50 feet setback. Regardless of whether...
Regardless of where it is in town, it's going to be a minimum of 50 feet.
Yes.
But if you're located someplace else, then there's going to be other...
If it's impacted by residential, it's going to be 200 feet.
Yeah, at minimum, yeah.
Okay. And last but not least, they do generate noise. Minimum setback area shall include a vegetative buffer at least. It says 15 feet wide along all property lines. We have to keep 30 feet from the system? So a 20 foot vegetative buffering screening?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
That works.
How does that affect things currently? So you got a guy goes in and puts up a building, he's got to have...
20 feet.
20 feet.
And then if you, depending on how many parking spaces, that's increased.
Right. So that seems like a no brainer. Because there's already going to be, as far as from the property lines, there's already going to be a larger buffer line.
And it's to provide buffering and screening?
Right. So it's not that this thing is going to be, that we're providing it in the immediate surround of it. It's from the property line.
Yes, and which will leave a 30 foot clearance.
Again, like I said, that's kind of a no brainer.
All right. Any other concerns?
It gives a large enough area for any type of work.
I don't know if you even understood.
Yeah, someone's going to have to give me some language.
All right, so number five setbacks, Tier 1 battery energy storage system. I'm sorry, setbacks, Tier 1, 2 and 3 battery energy storage system shall be setback a minimum of 50 feet from all side rear and front lot lines. The rest of the language is going to remain the same until you get to the next sentence. The minimum setback area should include a vegetative buffer slash screening area at least 20 foot wide along all property lines.
At least 20 feet?
Yeah, it says 15. We'd like to see it 20. And that'll leave the required clearance, the fire department wants it 30 feet.
All right, so setbacks for Tier 1, 2 and 3 battery energy storage systems, so setback a minimum of 50 feet from all rear...
Side rear.
Side rear and front line.
Yep.
And we add, change at least 15 feet to 20 feet and we add buffering slash screening.
And then we need to add a setback to Wells for 150.
Ah, yes, thank you very much.
And add that 150 foot setback for Wells energy systems. So in regarding noise wise for that cranky HVAC, an acoustic study is required.
Acoustic study, and I think the buffering and screening will help keep that.
Yeah, because we don't want any of those noisy window units hanging out.
Again, this is public hearing.
I have a public hearing.
Sorry to wake you up there.
Sean Bogart, 116 Cranberry Road. I have a lot of comments and trying to sort through them all here. I'm a little confused by this. So we've already been installing multiple battery storage containers in the PV sites that are already throughout town. So there's no difference in those containers. They're the same thing, they're performing the same function. So take away the solar panels and now I'm going to follow this bylaw?
With the solar panels or without the solar panels?
So if you're going to have battery storage as part of a PV array, the battery storage component has to follow this bylaw?
No.
Well, that's my question, so...
Battery energy storage for solar is solar. Battery energy storage without solar is this bylaw?
Right, so this makes absolutely no sense.
I see your point.
You could effectively, just like the sites we have now, Mr. Bott keeps saying that we're not going to see any more of these. And I think you're really referring to these massive facilities. Cranberry Point is 300 times one of those containers. That's a huge increase. That you're talking about this massive project and then you're creating a bylaw to talk about 1, 2, 3, 4 containers. We already have sites in town that have 2, 4, 6 containers. They can go on the distribution circuits. You said, you said all the power lines go through RA. Well, maybe the transmission lines, is that what you're referring to? When you say that?
And keep in mind this is for Tier 3. So we're talking about Tier 1, Tier 2. These are sort of accessory uses to someone's property.
Right, but there's no...
I got a store, I want battery storage. I got a Cranberry guy, I want battery storage. I don't want a reliable diesel generator, I'm going to do battery storage.
Sure, so what's stopping anyone from, I want to put four of these containers with the exception of the zoning, right? So I can't do that in RA district, you're saying now? The zoning within the...
The Tier 3, correct.
Right, so, okay, I think I saw the Green Business Park was an allowable use location.
It's under special permit.
Okay, so what's stopping some, a new applicant in North Carver at that, well, that's the Green Business Park, right? What's stopping them from saying, I want to put 10 of these in, right? 10 megawatt hours? That's a distribution level project. You don't need transmission lines to do that. There's a certain time where you're going to hit that threshold and you're going to saturate your circuit. But these can go on a distribution circuit. It does not have to be a transmission rated project. So I think that's a great example. The Green Business Park, you could put in a bunch of these containers. The make, you said $3 million per mile. That's probably the transmission level figure, I would assume because you said it was only for the power lines going through RA. So for the rest of the town, which is distribution, it's probably a lot cheaper. 80 make pieces spent millions of dollars, Sarah Sterns, if she was still here, could probably help me out in confirming that. They spent millions of dollars in Wareham with substation upgrades, building new distribution circuits solely for their solar projects, which include battery storage. It's just money. They'll spend the money because there's money to be made. So it doesn't, it's not going to cost that much when you're making that much more to build a brand new circuit to feed 10 of these containers, maybe 20 of them in the Green Business Park. They can go anywhere in town. So if they're allowed in the IA, IB, IC, I mean, I have to look at a map to pick out all the places. But there is plenty of space in this community to place numerous containers at the distribution level. It does not have to be a transmission project. The Cranberry Point is an anomaly in itself. It's so massive. At the time when they came to town, it was like the largest project in the world that it was being proposed. It's been dwarfed by others by now, but including Medway. So I think the intent of this, I get, is probably to resolve some of the headaches that the community has felt from this massive project in the center of town. But I don't think this is fixing it. You know, and again, like, if I wanted to put four of these, if I had enough land in RA district and I'm going to put in four of these containers, maybe six of them, 6 megawatt hours, all I have to do is add an acre of solar according... six megawatt hours, all I have to do is add an acre of solar according to the thirty-five eighty solar bylaw, and now my containers, I can put them in my RA district, right? That's what you've basically said to me.
Well, I'm saying that this is battery storage, it doesn't do solar.
Right, so this is all, but.
So, if you wanna put battery storage in RA, under tier two, yeah, you come to play and work for a special permit.
Right.
So, what's stopping?
No, I'm talking tier three. I want a tier three. I want tier three based on your capacity rating. So, if I want over one megawatt hour, which is basically one unit, all I have to do is have an acre of solar to go with it, and I can put it in an RA district. So, again, we've been doing this already. You're already doing that under the solar bylaw.
It, it is a good question. So, let me ask this. What separates battery energy storage systems from battery energy storage systems that are connected to a solar panel? At, at what point, why can't I put ten megawatts and attach it to a solar panel?
Because that's a solar development, not a battery development. And if you decide this, if you, and we talked about this, I think, at some point, if you decide to say, in our solar bylaw, we're gonna say, you cannot have energy storage with a solar project, you will absolutely be escorted out of the building by the attorney general. That's, that's, you, you, you cannot touch that in our.
Right, but we have a.
So, this is regulating strictly battery storage. There is no solar component.
But, but at what point? So, if I put a solar panel on the proposed Cranberry Point, then it becomes a solar project? I mean, what is there to differentiate between putting ten megawatt hours on a solar field that, that, that can't produce that amount that I?
Well, that, that's.
It has to be large, it has to be, it has to be large. It has to be a large-scale ground mounted solar.
Okay.
So, it has to be two, two hundred and fifty kilowatts.
So, I put two hundred and fifty kilowatts down?
And then you have, what you have then, your principal use is solar, and the battery is accessory. It's, it's basically accessory. It's really not even.
But we don't have any limits.
No, no, wait, wait. So, at what point does that separate? Is it just because the solar panels attached to it, it becomes an accessory?
Yes, because it, the, the battery storage is, is associated with the solar. I guess if you had a solar field, and then you had, you know, a tier three BESS, you know, ten feet away, that's not connected to solar at all, you're then looking at two principal uses on the, on the law. So, that, you have a problem there in many ways.
Well, let's say, it's.
Let's say that.
A two hundred and fifty kilowatt large-scale solar, but I wanna put, well, ten containers, ten kilowatt containers on, on site. Now, my solar can't possibly regenerate that every day.
Right, so you wouldn't need those. So, so I don't think you need to permit all of those in association with thirty-five eighty.
Okay, but we don't have a limit set.
So, should it be that the batteries, energy storage system should have a limit of no more than a hundred and twenty-five percent of what can be generated by the solar?
No, if it becomes too big, it's another principal use.
Okay.
So, that's the problem.
But we don't, we haven't set, we haven't set up how big is too big.
We haven't set up a principal use. You didn't say I can't have my own battery energy storage. The, the solar bylaws out doesn't say the principal use is to have batteries with the solar. It doesn't mention batteries at all.
That's because batteries are incorporated into the solar, into the solar array.
Right, but you can put batteries, you can put the battery containers on a solar site, and they serve the same function that the, a massive project like Cranberry Point would serve.
Right, but we have no regulations in regards to that. There's, it's not, it's not in the solar bylaws. So, how do we handle regulating that? How do we, please, Mr. Mackey?
Just, just from past experience, I don't think I've ever seen a solar field with one or two.
Central Road and Cranberry Road, they've all been approved. They've built.
Yeah, but.
One of the things, what I'm saying is, what you're doing with the solar, you're, you're generating electricity, you're storing it into the battery systems that are on the solar field. When nighttime comes, or when there's an energy, when they need energy, then it's put out on the grid. But it, it, so it stores some of the energy that's used. We have a thing like Cranberry Point, that's energy that's taken off grid, stored in the batteries, and then put out when needed.
But you can do the same thing.
It's too different, it's too.
But it's not, you can do the same exact thing at the distribution level, it's just a different voltage. It's about making money. I'm not buying my electrons when they're cheaper during the day, and I'm placing them back onto the grid when I can make more money because they're more expensive at night. That's exactly what Cranberry Point is.
Right. So, right, and, and I, I see your point, but the question I have is, so we have absolutely no regulations in regards to battery energy storage systems affected ancillary to solar?
So, so I guess I'm confused. Explain to me how you have a solar array hooked up to ten of these. They would, you couldn't hook them up. So, they wouldn't be part of the solar.
How, how do you, how do you figure you can't hook them up?
Wait, I mean, wait, wait.
They're not, they're not, they only use.
One at a time.
What they can use. I mean, if the solar system only generates so much power, you're only gonna put in as many solar battery systems as you have. I've never seen more than one or two on any of them that we have done while I was on the planning board. So, but the thing is, is that the attorney general counts the, the battery storage as part of the solar. So, there's really nothing you can do about that. I've never seen anybody put in more battery storage on a solar than, than is needed. I, it doesn't make sense.
But we can regulate solar, and we can regulate batteries. Why can't we regulate? Or, or why do we not have anything in our solar bylaws that addresses battery storage in regards to this?
Well, I think when the first solar came out, there wasn't any batteries.
But we just, we just went through an entire year of solar bylaw study moratoriums, and I thought we were addressing both issues with these two separate bylaws, but that's not the case. And, and now it's coming up to town meeting, and there's, there's not any reference in here to any sort of battery storage systems in regards to solar. No setbacks, no protections for water wetlands, no secondary containment systems, no fire systems. There's, I'm just concerned that there's, there's no regulations in regards to these associated with solar. And that should be an issue. That should've been something that was addressed this year, past year. Whereas I thought we were addressing them with these two bylaws, but we didn't address anything with batteries in this. There's no setbacks from property lines, there's, there's no keep it out of the wetlands or protected areas, there's, there's no requirements for, well, the fire safety codes are the fire safety codes, but review or training for our, our fire department falls under the solar installation guideline. But, again, we didn't even address it with this.
Well, like I said, the first ones that came along didn't have any battery storage. The solar didn't have any battery storage.
Right, yeah.
And then they started coming in with battery storage. But the attorney general's saying that, that solar, that the battery storage is part of the solar, so.
So, why wasn't it addressed?
But we still, but we still have to put some type of restriction on the size of these things.
Well, size and, and location, and safety. So, I, I understand, so.
I don't know if the attorney general will allow you to do that.
The attorney general's not gonna allow us to keep a battery energy storage system associated with solar out of a, a wetland, or?
Or limit it to a hundred and twenty-five percent?
If, if I can clarify about the things.
Wait a second.
There are two different bylaws. Solar is solar, battery storage is battery storage. For solar, you have setbacks. You have a two-hundred-foot setback. They're residential property. You have a fifty-foot setback. All those things that are setbacks for solar are part of the setbacks for batteries. Where they're at on the site is the same, it's, it's part of the system.
Okay.
They have those setbacks. Hundred and fifty foot from a well, hundred and fifty, two-hundred foot from the property.
I, I get that, but we put solar on bogs. Right?
You may.
The interconnection area is not. For dual use, for dual use, the interconnection area is not on bogs. It's on, it's on upland.
It's, it's on?
Upland.
Upland?
Yes.
Okay.
So, it's not out of wetland.
But, but that's, it's not in our laws, it's not, you know?
No, under the smart program. They, they can't put a battery in, in a bog. So, under the smart program.
Right, and, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that they could, but, but we don't address it at all. We don't address that it's on an upland that's off of a riverway, or within twenty-five feet of a bog, or a ground surface water. I, I'm just.
I think conservation would deal with that.
Well, I would think they could make recommendations to the planning board under the special permits as, as, as it comes up in front of us. But I think the planning board should have guidelines in regards to this. I, so, but that's not gonna, it's, it's, it's not gonna affect where my opinion on the battery energy storage systems, because we need to address that. But I, I just feel that it should've been included in, if it's not part of the battery energy storage systems, it should've been included in the solar bylaws. It should've at least, at the very minimum, been addressed. And I was on that committee, and that just terribly short-sighted of me. All right.
Well. If I may finish this line real quick. I, I think for me, it's just, it's a couple things. And I know the committee's on a war, that we have stuff that we need and we've never had, but maybe it needs to not be rushed, and maybe it needs to go back to the committee, we work on some more. Maybe it doesn't make it start at this meeting. I, I know.
All right, now, now, my concern with that is if we said, then we have nothing.
Right. The other thing, and I guess my biggest, my whole point of all that is, you're, you've created a use table for battery storage, and you can't have it in RA zone. But you can, because you already do, you just have to have some solar panels. So, it's no difference.
I, I see your point. All right.
But, but it's not, you can have a standalone, sure. But, a standalone doesn't have to be three hundred containers. A standalone can be four containers, it can be ten containers. It doesn't have to be three hundred containers. So, if you can have a standalone of four containers, you can have a solar site with four containers, and now you can have it in an RA zone. It's just silly, it doesn't line up. I know you get what I'm saying.
I, I understand. I, I, but we're, we're kind of in a catch twenty-two at this point. All right.
Sorry.
So, currently, the board feels with our amendments, the battery storage system is reasonable?
Yes.
All right. So, address the use charge chart. It's section twenty-one, and it includes definitions on the rear, including direct to battery.
What page? Oh. Oh, we've moved on, we're moving.
Well, this is part of.
Oh, changed.
Of, of what we're, of the battery energy storage system, is it? I believe I read it. Yeah, and further by amending section twenty-two thirty, use regulation schedule regarding.
Gotcha.
All right. Because I, I think you've been very patient. All right. So, we're on the use regulation schedule, which addresses?
X three? No, X two, so the second part, yeah. So, the definitions?
Yeah.
Use regulations schedule. This is the use table on the, on the screen behind you. So, tier one battery storage is a use permitted by right, and that typically means a site plan review. For those containers that are under that, in that tier one. I'm gonna save the number if I don't have it in front of me. So, tier one, those puppies right there, permitted in all zoning districts. The site plan by the planning board. Tier two, those guys, permitted by special permit in all zoning districts but VB and V, village business and village. It's one of all those other districts. And then tier three, the big enchiladas, are permitted by special permit in highway commercial, Green Business Park, IA, IB, IC, and airport.
Discussion, concerns? Tier one is household size. Tier two is roughly the size of the shed. We're keeping it out of some of the greater density areas.
So, why can't we take tier three, take that out of the Green Business Park?
Well, I suppose we could. It couldn't be a standalone fun- thing. Here's the thing. As part, in order to qualify for a Green Business Park, and correct me if I'm wrong, it has to have a certain percentage of solar associated with.
Is that a yet, yeah, right. But you just said you can't have solar and the battery storage together, right?
No, if solar and battery storage are interconnected, it falls under the solar bylaw.
Falls under solar.
And, and am I, I don't believe I'm mistaken when I say that Green Business Park is required to have a percentage of solar in it?
I never read that.
Okay.
I thought it was just the building that they're putting up.
Well, they asked for, what, over half a million? And I thought it was in order.
I thought the state required a building that big would have to use solar.
That's what, what I believe too, but maybe I was mistaken.
That was based on the size of the structure they were wanting.
Right, that's what I was.
Three million. But if somebody, and, and right now with that gone, somebody can come into Green Business Park, to the subdivision, and put forty small buildings in there. And those small buildings aren't gonna require an EPO review, and aren't gonna require.
Well, no, what I was saying.
Incremental is, will put a minor threshold for any of that.
But also I'm saying, why can't we take that out of the Green Business Park?
Right.
It, you don't have to do it.
Thoughts, Mr. Gatski?
Um.
What was the other?
Oh, the, when, when, when I was even considering it for a special permit, I saw the Green Business Park, as far as tier three, is it's an isolated area. I mean, it's, there's, as far as a catastrophic failure of a tier three-type system, that it would have the least impact residentially, because the, the size of the place is massive. And there's not my, even, even Middleborough, housing is not very close to, if you were to set it in the middle of it.
How big is it, a hundred and thirty acres, Green Business Park?
Couple of them in there.
Ish, no ish. So, if there's a disaster, it's a good place for it.
And the water's already contaminated.
Right, and it can't, it can't be, it cannot be a principal use in the Green Business Park, as far as I'm aware.
Yeah. Yep.
So right now it's listed as being permitted by a specialment for the planning board in green business.
As a...
At her energy storage.
Right, as, as a principal use?
Right, that's what we're talking about, battery energy storage is a principal use. Tier ones and tier twos are more accessible, are more accessory uses, but tier three, the one that most people are concerned about is that primary use.
And that's, and that's what, um, Mr. Bogart was saying, um, that what's to stop anybody from basically doubling up Cranberry Point out there? And, um, using it as a distribution network, as opposed to a transmission network.
Can we require it, because, can we require it as a, as, as an accessory use to the green business park?
I would say you're pregnant or you're not in the green business park, make it a use, or get rid of it.
Thoughts? Alright, Rich says no, uh, not, not, doesn't feel it's appropriate, John? Alright, I'll come back to you, I won't put you on the spot.
I'm good.
No, I mean, um, the question is, uh, as a principal use in the green business park, do you feel that large scale battery storage, tier three, should be allowed as a principal use?
If it requires something that large?
Well, we would, see, that was, like, if Amazon went in there, then Amazon would be the principal use.
Right.
But if battery storage goes in there, then battery storage is the principal use.
I'm a little confused on this issue, I have a trouble.
Because I...
I'm having trouble with it.
Alright.
I'm gonna have to go with Rich on this, as a principal use, I would have to say no.
Say that again?
As a principal use, I would have to, I, I think I would have to go with a no.
And you've got plenty of other districts that you've put it in, so it's not, you've got, you've got cards to play with.
Yeah, so, and like I said, as an accessory use, if it's a big, if it's a big facility that goes in there, and they need a, a tier three, uh, as backup power, or something like that, that's, uh, due to the remote location, I, I, you know, I don't think that I would have too much of an issue with that, but, uh, as a principal use, uh, without, with no limitations, no.
I don't see us getting anything that large to require that.
I, I think, well, it has nothing to do with this, but there have, I've been, um, I believe the RDA is looking at another potential. So, but I, I, I think it would be, it would be a loss to the town.
To that, like, on that large?
To, right. So I would like to see...
Are we gonna go into three nights?
I, I don't, I, I don't know, we'd have to ask Ms. Quest about, but I...
Could we get, could they get hearings on it, you know, if we say no?
The, the question is, in the green business park, if we, if we...
There are no hearings. There are no hearings.
So no, no.
I, I'm gonna have to agree with these gentlemen that as a principal use in the green business park, I don't, I don't think it would be doing the town any favors, so I, I would be against that.
So we're saying no in green business park for tier three?
Yes.
And I got three people who thought that was a swell idea?
I...
I mean?
Aye.
Okay, so...
I'm not sure if swell is the right word, but at this hour. So any other questions or concerns? Any other comments?
I have a comment or a question.
Please.
So in, since you're talking about the green business park, can you, is the use table for the solar bylaw allow solar in the green business?
No, solar's not allowed in the green business park. Solar is allowed, but a large scale solar development's, I'm pretty certain it's not allowed in the...
Large scale ground mine and solar, is it permitted use by special permit in green business park?
With a plus plus, whatever that means.
What does that mean? And has that changed?
And an asterisk.
Yes, so, uh, I'm not sure why there's a plus plus here, but, uh, the asterisk is a specialment by the planning board.
Was it always that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do remember that.
Do you, because I thought we were told that solar, it couldn't just be a solar field, that it could have associated solar with it.
But I ask that, because then you can have solar with the battery storage, you just can't have the battery storage by itself, if that's where you're going, it's just silly, it's silly.
Yeah, I see your point.
I know people who worked hard, and I get it, it's difficult, I understand that, it just doesn't line up.
So right now we got battery storage, no, in green business park.
Yeah.
We're gonna add a definition, a forested land to our definition, is there anything else we want to talk about as far as, um, battery storage bylaw for the chart?
I think I'm comfortable at this point with this.
Yeah, me too.
It's better than nothing.
So if a big business came in, would they require the larger storage, let a big business say?
It, it would be an ancillary use, it wouldn't be the primary use of, of the lot. So if Amazon came in and said they, we need for these containers, that would be ancillary, it would be accessory to the business itself. The primary business would still be Amazon, but, you know, they own Whole Foods, maybe they got freezers and chillers and coolers they need to run. So it would still be allowed as an accessory use, just not as a primary use. I think, alright, so, if we're comfortable, um, or there's no more questions or comments, then the chair will accept a motion to recommend article X two, amend carver zoning bylaws, adding a new section thirty-nine fifty battery energy storage system, and amend section twenty-two thirty use regulation schedule regarding battery storage, amend article six definitions, and amend the carver zoning map to identify areas for use. Recommendation to town meeting, as a positive recommendation to town meeting.
No, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Gatske.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dion, any further discussion?
It's not perfect, but it's what we got, it's better than nothing.
Seem none, then?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gatske says aye.
Alan Sodillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
Any more of those hearings?
We, we, uh, yes, um, the chair will accept the motion to close the public hearing for article X two, amend carver zoning bylaw, adding a new section thirty-nine, thirty-five ninety battery energy storage systems, and amend section twenty-two thirty use regulation schedule regarding battery storage, amend article six definitions, and amend the carver zoning map to identify areas for such use, to close the hearing.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dion, seconded by Ms. Sodillo, further discussion, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gatske says aye.
Alan Sodillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye, alright, um, no, I think at this point we're going to continue the public...
Please, we take one zoning map?
Excuse me, that we are going to continue, wait, excuse me, please, that we are going to continue the public hearing to tomorrow night. I would like to know if the board will accept, if the board is acceptable of a motion to take article X three specifically, and only in regards to?
A.
A, out of order.
Sixteen lot nineteen?
It's, uh, sixteen lot nineteen, section A, under X three.
So moved.
On the screen right there.
Motion made by Mr. Gatske, do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Sodillo, I, I am going to read the public hearing announcement.
All in favor?
All, all in favor, Mr. Dion?
Aye.
We're taking it out of order, Mr. Gatske?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Shea, aye, alright. Please, I have to read the public hearing, okay, so we are now opening the public hearing for article X three specifically A. Amend zoning map to correct previous zoning changes not reflected in the current twenty-fifteen zoning map. To see if the town will vote to amend the twenty-fifteen zoning map to correct previous emissions and printing errors as shown on corrections to carver zoning maps, maps on file with the town clerk, or take any other action relative thereto. Tonight, we are specifically and only discussing section A, map sixteen, lot nineteen, changed in error by a new map vendor circa twenty-eleven, from general business to residential agricultural, as researched by the planning director in twenty-seventeen. This error set into motion discovery of other misidentified parcels on the current twenty-fifteen zoning map.
So in your packet, you have under one of five, pages twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, this is the, the map that you see in question here, in the pink down at the bottom. And as I said, this was brought to, uh, to my attention, Mr. Fernandez, who had this conversation with the town in two thousand seventeen. So in two thousand seventeen, uh, the planning director at the time, Marlene McCollum, uh, said, "The board discussed the zoning map discrepancy, we agree there seems to be an error, they have asked to have the map corrected and reverted back to the zoning as shown on the two thousand ten map. I will contact Serpide, their D I S department maintains the zoning map and requests a change." However, sir, make a change on a map is not a memo, it's an action of town meeting. So we are not changing the zoning on anything, we are simply correcting the map, because the map is wrong and based on the zoning that's already been changed.
Okay.
So in the case of Mr. Fernandez, apparently from my conversations with Serpide, is that there was an intern apparently working for the town at the time and did some corrections of things, and then we changed vendors, and stuff fell off the table. Colors on the map changed, colors on the map weren't updated, mapping's been sort of, we've been sort of handicapped in mapping for, for quite a while here in Carver. So we were back in research, all of these articles, and so we've got references to all the other zoning changes, but in this case, it was essentially a scribbler's error, where the person who made the map changed the color, and we have really no idea why, and in the two pages of the memo to Marlene, uh, from Marlene to the town clerk, she goes on to discuss, you know, how this was coming about, and how we got to that point. And like I said, and that started the search for what other parcel on the map were changed. So we got fifteen or so of them, thirty discovered so far, and likely we'll do this again next year when we find some more that have been off, off, off this beaten path. But in this case, it's a scribbler's error, someone made a error in changing the map. Our article simply corrects the map, it doesn't change the zoning, which has and has always been, um, not always been, because before English people moved here, it probably not zoned at all. Um, so, um, general business. And Mr. Fernandez is here, you can, uh, tell you in detail that I was not particularly articulate.
Mr. Fernandez, I mean, it's...
Ron Fernandez, forty-three, I have to say, uh, maybe that's quite an education on solar. I don't know, I don't see no committee, so. So as Mr. Board has mentioned, I did get in to see him last summer. He is the third town planner, and I think I sat in, so just a real quick timeline, I don't know, um, I don't know an extent to the, the mapping issues, I can only give you a little information and background, you guys got particular parcel? The, um, I believe the only revision that I, I can recall, since I've owned the parcel, took place in two thousand and five, when Carver re-zoned, um, some of, they did the rezoning on the districts. Prior to two thousand and five, the general business district, the edge back in North Carver, came across a power line, it comes off a quicker road, um, that was the edge of the general business, and then it went to, um, RA, after the power line heading south. And when the town went ahead and did the rezoning, um, I believe at that time, the, it was a car lot where the, uh, the, um, was the place across the, um...
The big blue building with the childcare facility in it?
The big blue building, it sits right on the white fence. So that was a car lot, and he was looking to square off that lot, so he can put houses, cars in the back.
Magic, right?
Magic, yeah, magic.
That's my magic.
Oh, that's ten billion, my neighbor. So anyway, they square off, they green on the, on the other side of the street where I own a particular lot that's on the map, to square it off, so that was in two thousand and five, I believe, and that's when the zoning changed. My initial conversations with the town planner at that point, the maps hadn't changed, and they issued it, only because the maps that were showing the town hall had changed, the zoning was correct. I didn't pick up again on this until, uh, the time I set up a master plan committee around two thousand and fifteen, and that's when I started the conversation with the planner at that point. And I was told that if it hadn't been changed at town meeting, um, then it was gonna change, but it was incumbent upon myself to do the research, to find out if that zoning had changed at town meeting, and I went to see the clerk, she was really good, a little doy, I knew at the time. And we did all the research, so we got all the town meetings from two thousand and five up to that point, did the conversations with the attorney general's office, and then we got back to the town planner, and I'm like, hey, the chiller, I said it was a mistake, and it was gonna be fixed, and again, last summer, we went to see the new town planner, Mr. Board, and he said it was on the general, so that's kind of the timeline. I don't know the extent, like I say, to the issues with maps across the town, but that clearly was some sort of noticeite that's just been hanging around the town. I do know, if you look at the town map, in that general vicinity, major gear is basically showing in RA currently.
This, this is...
That's correct.
Major area, right, yeah, and, uh, sorry, refer to this way. Which one of these properties had the airplane parked on the front?
Just to the south.
This one down here?
That's correct.
Okay, yep, and so the, uh, the tractor, um, sales?
Tractor sales would be...
Norfolk, you're talking about Norfolk Power?
Yes.
Norfolk, yeah, eighteen is the Cranberry block.
Okay, okay, and this is where they just put in the new house?
That's correct.
Yes, okay, excellent, yes. So I, just, just for my clarification, because clearly, uh, when I looked at the zoning maps, it, it should have been included. Alright, do we have any questions, comments, or concerns from the board in regard to this? So the chair will accept a motion to recommend... So the chair will accept a motion to recommend Article X3, section A, to town meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Gasky. Further discussion? Mr. Dion?
Uh, Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
And thank Mr. Fernandez for his...
Yes, please, and your patience.
...patience for 10 years and for...
Because I was looking at the dates on these, and then I look at the names, and I'm just like, that was so long ago, and this, so... I'll get that fixed for you. Now, at this point, uh, I would like to continue. The chair will accept the motion to continue the public hearing for...
Battery, no, they're not, okay.
Yep. Zoning ma, uh, zoning changes till tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, uh, at the police station. Everybody's welcome, and, uh, further discussion? So I will take a motion, I will accept a motion to continue the public hearing till tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Carver Police Station.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gasky, seconded by Ms. Sardillo. Further discussion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye. And at this point, I don't think we have any further business. So I will, uh, chair will accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dion, seconded by Ms. Sardillo. Further discussion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. We want to thank you all for joining us.
Thank you for your patience.
Mr. Mackey and Ms. Puckley. And we want to thank Tom Bott for all the assistance he's given us getting this far. Thank you very much.
Have a good night, then.